From October eighth and November nineteenth. So, starting with October eighteenth, do we have any, uh, any comments from the board on that? George?
Uh, you.
Move to approve.
I will second.
Any further discussions? All in favor? Aye.
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 No extensions, no. Over eight minutes are approved.
Hey, Charles, Emily's here.
Yeah, I just say that. Emily, have you been sworn in or, and are you an official member of the board at this point?
I'm not sworn in, no, but I was given the info, so I wanted to show up.
Okay, yeah, great, good, good. So, uh, you can, you can listen in. Great, thanks.
I will listen in, but I will shut off my camera so I can eat my dinner then.
Okay, yeah, I get that. Thank you. And maybe hit the mute button. Any, any, uh, any, any comments for the, uh, the minutes of November nineteenth? George?
Yeah, I'll move to approve and also, uh, offer one, um, minor edit on page two in the paragraph bottom. On the second line, it says, "Ask it questions," and I would just suggest eliminating the word "it." So it says, "While the planning board asked questions."
Okay.
Repeat that. Can you repeat that, George?
Sure. On the, uh, longer paragraph at the bottom of page two, second line, second word is "it." I don't think that word is necessary. I would eliminate "it." So it says, "The planning board asked questions."
Got it. Yeah, or it could have been the possessive "its questions."
Either way, it, otherwise it looks like we're asking the EDC questions.
Less is more. Let's just get rid of the "it."
I will second that.
Okay, any further discussion on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that sounded unanimous to me. So, November nineteenth minutes are approved. Next on the agenda is site plan review. Application of Dmitry Darmashev for property located at 347 Well Street. Assessors map, uh, 102 lot 25, which is located in the, uh, general industry zoning district. For site plan review and approval pursuant, sections 208.4 of the zoning ordinance in order to allow a trucking firm with repair and servicing shop for business vehicles and a contractor's yard with open storage of raw materials, finished goods, and equipment at this location. Is the applicant here with us to present the project?
Uh, yes, my name is Eugene. Um, I'm just, there you go. Uh, and my brother Dmitry, Dmitry is, um, the property is in his name. He's also with me. And so, um, we've been at this location for a couple of years, but, um, before we purchased this property, there was, um, Fisher Trucking or somebody by that name, uh, also local, uh, truckers. So, um, I s- I guess, uh, that property never went through the planning board. And so, uh, that's why we were asked to go through the process and, uh, present what we're doing over there. So, we're a trucking firm, uh, doing over the road trucking. And we just, uh, when we come home, we park the trucks. So that's where the trucks are parked and a little shop to keep, uh, uh, just supplies and stuff like that for, um, for the trucks. So, nothing, uh, it's not like, um, uh, nine to five operation. It's just, uh,
I don't know, half hour.
It's just we get in the trucks and we go to work over the road all over.
Take it out of the foil and put it in the microwave.
Um, excuse me.
Please mute yourselves.
Can you do a, 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 a mask mute, Eric?
Yes, I'll do that right now.
Okay.
You have to unmute yourself. Yep, there, there you go.
Yeah, Eugene, if you could, you're gonna have to unmute yourself to continue speaking, please. Thank you.
There you go. Alright, so, um, like I said, uh, it's, um, uh, the trucks are parked at the location. We, uh, typically Mondays, because we are on the road, tend to, um, try to be on the road weekdays. So, um, leave Mondays, come back Friday, Saturday, and park the trucks and go home. And so for the most part, the, um, Wall Street location is used for, parking the trucks when we're not on the road. At the same time, uh, uh, JS Ray is also a tenant. Uh, they, um, were looking for a place to, uh, store their equipment and, uh, raw materials for, um, I guess they have a three-year contract with the, uh, the gas company. And so they were looking for a place to, um, store their equipment, uh, here in town. And they're, they're a tenant.
Okay. So, just, so I think what you, one thing you said earlier was that you, you, you bought the, uh, you bought the property and it was already in operation as a, as, as a, as a trucking contractor yard at that point?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what, um, I know, um, the property, property owned by, uh, Mackin, Mackin, uh, um, but they had the tenant there, uh, by the name of Fisher. I think that's what the company is called, Fisher Trucking. And so, uh, pretty much that's why we bought it, because, uh, we were looking for a place to, uh, park our trucks when we're home. And so that's how we ended up buying the property. And, um, at some point, a couple of years ago, um, I don't know how it came about that I got into conversation with the planning board to go through the site plan review. Uh, but I hired the surveyor and, um, a couple of other people to help me with the process and kind of got stalled. I didn't, uh, I, I forget what happened. And it didn't, uh, it didn't go, um, we didn't go through the process. The application was withdrawn a couple of years ago. So, um, uh, now, um, I believe, I believe, uh, some of the neighbors might have made the complaint to the town when JS Ray was setting up shop. And, uh, so, um, we're going through the process of, um, review now.
Okay, thanks. Um, so I, we, we have your application here and there is a, um, sort of a site survey that has the, uh, that has the, the JS, the JS Ray Contractor Yard sort of delineated from the trucking firm. The, the contractor yard is where you're, is where you have, you're sort of in process with a, with a, with a, uh, a special permit from the ZBA to get the eight-foot fence, right? So that's the area that's fenced in right now?
Yeah, they fenced it in, yep.
Right. Okay, and they, they did that without getting a permit, I understand.
I don't know what they did. I mean, they said they were gonna fence it in, so, uh, that's something they did. And, uh, obviously, now we know there was no permits pulled.
Okay. Well, there's, there's, so there's a certain amount of correspondence involved, uh, in, in here, which, which I want to share that, that comprises, uh, uh, information that, uh, from the, 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 uh, planning director and from, uh, the DPW. Some, uh, um, a petition from, from the neighbors, talking about some of their concerns. And then also, um, a narrative that I guess Dmitry drafted that talks about, um, the, uh, the, uh, sort of how, how are you gonna operate? The, uh, the, um, proposed hours for operation and trucking routes and, and those, and those sorts of issues. And, um, I think it might be helpful for the, for the process and for the public if I just sort of, read these, because they're, they're part of your application, which is sort of where, which is what we're kind of talking about right now, is the application before we get into the correspondence. So, um, so I'm just gonna read this thing, read this letter. Date in November 12th, 2020. To whom it may concern, this letter is to supplement additional information needed by the planning board for 347 Well Street site and plan review application. So the proposed hours of operation for both JS Ray and the trucking firm will be 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday to Saturday for JS Ray. Um, hours of operation for the trucking firm is 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday to Sunday. So that's, that sounds like seven days a week, right, for the trucking firm?
Yeah, that, uh, I just want to clarify, that refers to the, on the trucking side. If, uh, if I come home from, let's say I go to South Carolina, we go to South Carolina a lot. If I come home from South Carolina and it's, um, it's, uh, uh, late evening, I just come and park the truck and go home. So, that's pretty much, um, hours of operation, um, honestly, i- it's more like if I need to do something at the yard, let's say I need to do some, uh, maintenance to the truck or something that's gonna disturb, uh, the neighbors, uh, not disturb, but I'm, I'm saying like work there. I'm, I'm saying that, um, within, um, the allowable hours, which is for Town of Greenfield, the noise ordinance, right? It's, uh, seven to nine or, so that's why I just put that. But, um, uh, we just, uh, if we have something to fix or do, uh, on-site, we do it during the day when everybody's working outside and all that. Uh, I'm just saying that if I come from, uh, from a trip and it's, uh, late at night, I'm not gonna stop somewhere and wait till it's daytime to park my truck. I'm just gonna come home, park the truck, and go home.
Understood. Okay, thank you. So the proposed truck routes from the site are, truck routes are Well Street to Main Street to exit 26, Well Street to Silver Street to Federal Street, um, exit 27, Well Street to Silver Street to High Street to Route 2 East. Um, I, I assume that's into, that, that's in response to whatever concerns have been voiced about, about trucks traveling through the, the, the smaller residential streets?
Not sure. Uh, I was just asked to provide those routes.
Okay.
So, those routes just, uh, refer to how I get onto Route 2 to go towards Boston, how I go, uh, towards, uh, 91 North if I need to go into, uh, north on 95, on 91 North. And, um, uh, Well Street to Main Street down to exit 26 refers to if I need to go, uh, south on 91. That's, uh, how I get on the highway.
Okay. Um, the number of employees for both JS Ray and the trucking firm, there were about six employees for JS Ray and six employees for the trucking firm. The rest of the truck drivers are owner-operators that live, uh, here in town and park their trucks on weekends or at home for a longer period of time. That sort of gets to what you were discussing earlier about your, your hours of operation. The numbers of trucks allowed on the site, both for JS Ray and the trucking firm, up to 15 trucks for the trucking firm. JS Ray has four or five trucks plus earthmoving equipment. Existing and proposed lighting for the site, no existing or proposed lighting is, uh, is planned for the site. Delineation of truck parking at the site. Truck parking at the site is along the JS Ray fence line and directly across between the cinder block building uh, and railroad on existing gravel parking lot. Uh, delineation of employee parking lot at the site. JS Ray employees, uh, park their cars within the fenced area. The truck drivers, for the most part, get a ride from their house, from their spouse to the site because they're usually on the road days at a time. And if they leave the car on-site, it's in their designated truck spot or existing paved driveway in front of the building. Existing and proposed screening for the site. JS Ray is fenced in with an eight-foot high chain link fence with a green privacy screen, uh, netting mesh. No proposed screening for the existing, um, gravel parking lot. So that was, that's your, that's essentially your narrative that, um, that, that, that is in response to, um, to, to, to correspondence from Mark Snow. Is that, is that correct?
Well, it's also, um, part of the checklist with all the, uh, submit, uh, all the requirements to submit the application. There was questions about some of this stuff, so that's why, uh, that information is included.
Okay. Um, I also have, uh, Mark Snow's, uh, letter. Um, notice of violation of the Greenfield zoning ordinance. This was dated August 21st, 2020. I'm just, I'm not gonna read the whole letter because it's long, but I am gonna sort of cite this specific violations. So, uh, a fence was erected without, uh, the required permit, 206.2E. Fence along the front yard exceeds four feet in height, um, 206.2E. Fence along the portion of the side lot lines between the minimum front yard setback and rear uh, lot line and along the, the rear line itself. So, um, fencing issues there. To remedy these violations, obtain the required permit for the fence, bring the fence into compliance by reducing the height of the fence along the property line and side yard distance or apply for and be granted a special permit for the portions of the fence that do not meet the requirements of Greenfield zoning ordinance or remove the fence. So I think you're going through the process of applying for the special permit.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the keeping of more than unregistered, more than one unregistered motor vehicle on the premises um, ask for 206.1. To remedy this violation, obtain a license as required by MGO 14059 or apply for the granted special permit from the, uh, Greenfield ZBA or register motor vehicles or remove all vehicles except one. In, install a sign without the required permit, 206.7. To remedy this violation, obtain the required permit or remove the sign. So those were, those were essentially the, 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 I guess, the, the site violations, um, as, as, as it applies to, as it applies to the ordinance. Not, not to mention that, that we don't have, you don't have a site plan review, which is why we're here today to discuss, to discuss that. So, um, and then, um, in response to Mark's letter, um, Dmitry Darmashev wrote a letter, uh, to whom it may concern. This letter is in response to a letter sent by Mark Snow and also per the request of Eric Torog to address in writing the complaints from neighbors to explain to the ZBA and the planning board the way we intend to use the property. 325 Well Street is a vacant bill, building that is boarded up uh, until we find, are financially able to take it down. Parking area is used to park over the road semi-trucks when the drivers are home mostly weekends. We also do our own minor repairs and maintenance on the site. We recently purchased a couple of new trucks and have the older trucks unregistered parking on the site until we find buyers. Site plan review is on the planning board November schedule. Um, you made it to December here. Approximately half acre of land was leased recently to JS Ray to be used as a contractor yard and storage of raw material used for work there, uh, doing down here for the gas company. Apparently, the perimeter fence erected with a privacy screen is not up to code. And, um, we are asking for a variance on the fence of height from the ZBA. JS Ray got the site ready. It was probably a bit noisy, but, uh, uh, but don't believe that the current use is in violation of the noise ordinance. So JS Ray's, so this, JS Ray isn't a permanent business there? They're there for a few years, apparently, it sounds like?
Um, I was told, uh, well, we have a three-year lease agreement because they have a three-year, um, contract with the gas company to do work in town. Uh, I was told that, um, after that, that they might extend, depends on, uh, uh, what happens with their workload.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna continue, um, reading in, um, a couple more comments from the planning board, and I'm gonna read, uh, the citizen's petition. And then I think, and then I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna let the board deliberate and, and ask more questions. Just to give people a general sense of what's, 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 um, what, what's gonna be going on here. If any, any members of my board feel free to, 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 to chime in with any questions you have during, during this process. So this is, this is a memorandum, uh, to the planning board from Alan Torog, um, of the, uh, uh, the DPW. The Department of Public Works has reviewed the site plan, review submitted for the existing trucking firm with the pair and servicing shop for business vehicles and contractor's yard with open storage of raw materials, finished goods, and equipment at 347 Well Street. And he has the following comments. Um, access. Currently, there is no delineated entrance access with a paved apron to the site. The existing gravel lot for the trucking firm directly abuts Well Street and has existed this way since the trucking firm was established there. With the addition of the contractor's yard for JS Ray, the increased use of the property is negatively impacting the road jet, road edge. It is recommended a 10-foot by 30-foot wide paved apron be installed where JS Ray vehicles enter and exit the site to prevent further deterioration of the road edge. This is the minimum entrance exit width for commercial and this is the maximum exit and entrance width for commercial and industrial sites under zoning. Um, as a, as it affects the drainage. Since the removal of the topsoil from the fenced-in portion of the property, sediment laden stormwater is ending up in the city's stormwater management system, specifically in the catch basin located across from Place Terrace. It is recommended a grassy swale be installed along the interior of the fence line along the Well Street side of the contractor's yard. This would allow for infiltration of stormwater and approve, improve water quality by helping prevent sediment from entering, uh, the city's stormwater system. That was from the DPW. Um, this is from, uh, to the planning board from Eric Torog, Director of Planning and Development, dated November 17th, 1920, nine, nineteen twenty. November 17th, 2020. Uh, recommendations. The Department of Planning and Development recommends the following conditions of approval. One, the applicant shall follow all recommendations of the Department of Public Works stated in the November 16th, 2020 review memo. Two, trucks entering and exit the site shall use the truck routes presented in the application. Three, the applicant should remove all unregistered, all regis- the applicant should remove or register all unregistered vehicles on the property in excess of one vehicle. Um, zoning district property 347 Well Street assessors map 102 lot 25, um, in the general, uh, general industry district. The above referenced parcel is located within the GI zoning district. Properties to the north, south, and east are also zone GI. Properties to the west are zoned as urban residential, RA. The proposed use of the property is the trucking firm with a pair and service shop for the trucking firm and contractor's yard with open storage of raw materials, finished goods, and equipment. Both of these uses are allowed by right within the site plan review and approval from the planning and, and the planning board. Both of these uses are currently in operation at 347 Well Street without site plan approval. Enforcement letter from the Inspector of Buildings as Code Enforcement Officer dated August 21st, 2020 was issued to the landowner. Enforcement letter detailed several zoning violations to include the following. North complaints installing a sign without a proper perm, permit and flowing an eight-foot fence. Um, then setback areas, um, approved without, without approval or, or the required building permit. The keeping of more than one unregistered vehicle on the premises. Enforcement action has been halted as the applicant goes through the required permitting procedures and obtains proper permits. There's a brief narrative here. I'll just continue hitting parking and, and trucking routes. Um, the, the following off-site parking requirement supply, um, for industrial manufacturing, three quarters of a space, um, warehouse, storage, laboratories are similar, uh, three quarters of a space for each employee on the two largest shifts combined. Um, the number of employees for the trucking firm is six, the number of, uh, employees for JS Ray is six. Total 12 employees. This requires nine off-street parking spaces for employees. The applicant indicates that J, employees of JS Ray park their vehicles within the fenced area and that for the most part, the truck drivers typically catch a ride to the site but not park there. Um, if the truck drivers do park at the site, they park their vehicle in their designated spot or in the existing paved driveway in front of the building. Discussion of the proposed truck routes, which we've already talked about. Um, open space landscaping, the minimum landscaped open space requirement under current standards of the zoning ordinance for GI district is zero. Um, there is no existing or proposed lighting for the site. Fencing, the, the applicant has applied for the special permit, um, to allow the eight-foot fence. And, uh, just again, a reiteration of hours of operation. Proposed hours of operation for the trucking firm are seven to 10, Monday to Sunday. And proposed hours of operation for JS Ray are, uh, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, uh, Monday through Saturday. That was from, that was from the, um, the planning department. Um, any questions from the board yet? Any comments? Okay. So this was, um, this is a, a petition that looks like it was signed by, by around 40 folks, 40 neighbors. There's no, there's no date on it. I'm assuming, Eric, you know, do you know when this was, when this was, um, submitted?
We received that a couple of days ago. I don't have the exact date.
Okay. I'm just gonna read this for, you know, for the public's information and, and, um, because there are a number of folks here who's, who signed this. Uh, "We are the residents and property owners of Precinct, we, the residents and property owners of Precinct 3, particularly those of us who reside on Silver Place, Wells Court, Place Terrace, Cypress Street, Peter Street, Spruce Terrace, and Well Street, um, between Spruce Street and Silver Place, ins- insist the City of Greenfield take immediate action to have the two businesses located at 347 Well Street cease activities if they're having a negative impact on our safety and health. Large dump trucks continuously drive through our streets, sometimes at high speeds, putting our safety at risk. Large plumes of dust are generated on the property which blow across the neighborhood and puts our health at risk. Employees begin working before 7:00 AM making loud noises which disrupts our lives. Semi-tractor, uh, semi-tractor trailers idle their engines while in the parking lot for long periods of time, which is not only a nuisance, but is an environmental issue which affects our entire community. Uh, semi-tractor trailers while entering and exit the property at night shine their headlights into neighboring homes. The boarded-up house on the property is a health hazard and eyesore which devalues neighboring properties. We, the undersigned, are confident that our city officials will pursue the actions required to mitigate these and many other issues regarding 347 Well Street if they're having a negative impact on the safety and health and will make this, um, a high priority." There's, there's, uh, there is more. I, I mean, I think that, um, I, I, I guess I'd like to assure the, you know, the, the, the neighbors that we've, we've, we've read the correspondence, um, and we've, and we're, 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 um, we're, we're aware of, of everyone's concerns here. Um, and we, we have to sort of evaluate, um, the, the uses on the business from a, from a special permitting, from a, from a, from a site plan review perspective and, and, and sort of weigh and balance, um, the zoning ordinance and, and what, and what's allowed by right. And, uh, and what, and what we can do as a board to help, um, uh, ha- help, help out, help, help the, this business be a good neighbor. So, um, I'm gonna let, um, other folks chime in here. George, you have comments?
Well, I just wanted to, uh, as your, um, thank you for going so thoroughly through the, um, documentation we received. Uh, there were a couple of things that, uh, you didn't touch on. Charles, one was the, um, uh, letter we received from Mr., uh, Master Totoro. And also that we had received a letter from Counselor Disorga. I just wanted to make sure that was noted. I don't know if you wanna touch on the content at all, but I just wanted to mention those were on the board and read. I think you muted, Charles.
Indeed. Indeed. Um, so. Mister Masters Taros letter um had had three major points that that he wanted to make, which was that. The uh, the boarded up board uh building is is an eyesore and potential um. Uh, uh, health hazard. Um. He's, he's, he's concerned about the uh, there's the voicing concern about the. The tractor trailers coming and going and and idling and and coming in, coming and going onto the site at various um. All hours. Um, and then uh. Concerned about the JS Ray excavating um annex which set up shop and has been come a disruption to the neighborhood. Um, so I think those were his, his three main points. Um. And then uh, Counselor Disorder um submitted an email um. Expressing the, 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 the concerns of her, of her constituents and um. So those are, and those are submitted for public record, I believe. Is that correct, Eric? So people can review those?
That's correct.
Okay, um, does anybody have any questions for uh? The applicant, George?
Um, well, I had a couple of questions. This may be more for Eric and um, a couple of things related to the um. Uh, DPW um uh. And one was in the uh, in referring to having the uh paved apron. For the trucks coming on and off of um well, street. It specified where JS Ray vehicles would enter and exit. And I I wasn't clear if that was meant not to apply to uh trucks who were the other part of the site. All trucks would be in and exiting on that.
I think that the DPW's concerns are for a very specific area of the road that's being damaged and that has been done by the JS Ray. Area of the property. So the apron he's referring to and recommending is only for that portion and not for the rest of it.
Thank you. That's helpful. And in the, the other um aspect of the um DPW, it talks about addressing. The um drainage issues from the um uh sentiments and I I wondered if the uh, is any methods by which. Um, there's mitigation for dust, because that's referenced quite a bit by um neighbors as a concern. And impact, a negative impact. And again, I guess this is for Eric, um, because it doesn't sound familiar that there would be such a mitigation, but I just wondered about that.
Typically, uh, in a situation like this, the board could uh put a condition on or require that in times of uh. Dryness where we don't have a rain for a while or drought conditions or. Timeframes where there's little rain, uh, you could require them to do a watering, have a watering truck to water down the areas to minimize any of that happening.
Thank you.
Along that, along that line, Eric, but what about, what about putting down like um? Like, like some kind of TRG. Paving, you know, you know, surface that would, that would, that would maybe keep the dust down. I mean. Would that be a potential, is that a potential um?
My experience uh between gravel lots like this and TRGs is not much difference with the dust. Um, but. Gravel lots are allowed. The ordinance does not require it to be asphalt.
Okay. Um.
I just wanted to mention that uh, um, that parking lot for the most part is um topped off with the TRG. Uh, I think maybe close to the road, uh, not so much, but uh for the most part stopped off with TRG.
Okay. What, what about the issues around um, around, you know, trucks idling in, in, in the lot for extended periods? I know there's, there's a. There's a mass general law that that regulates that, but I don't know the specifics of that. Um. Eric, were you able to to fig- to determine what that? What those um sort of requirements are?
Yes, Mister Chairman. So. It is a mass general law, chapter ninety, section sixteen A. And it basically says no one can idle more than five minutes, no matter what kind of vehicle it is, truck all the way to a personal vehicle. Uh, the, this type of mass general laws enforced by local police and uh, that's all. It's pretty basic.
Okay, um, uh, this is, I guess this is a question for Eugene. Could, could you um maybe talk about? The idling and 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 why that goes on for extended periods of time?
Uh, I would say that idling is, uh, we try not to idle. But especially uh, when it's cold weather. You cannot warm up a truck in five minutes. It's uh, you're pretty much ruining a piece of equipment if you're not. Letting it come up to operating temperature. So um, that five minutes, which is a law, I understand. Is honestly not um. I don't know how to say it. It's. I have to idle the truck more than five minutes before it comes up to operating temperature. So I don't ruin my equipment before I go on the road.
How, and and what is that time period? Say, you know, on, on, on a typical cold winter's day, how long is that idling period?
Uh, about fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes. And so if there's, so if there's like, if there's like eight or nine trucks out there that are all sort of starting at uncoordinated random times. That's potentially, you know. Eight times ten, eighty, you know, that's like, you know, that's like, that's like a couple of hours of idling time.
No, that doesn't happen. That just doesn't happen. Uh, when, when a driver goes on the road. It's a driver. It's a, it's not like uh, seven o'clock uh in the morning, everybody comes to work, everybody starts their truck. That's not how. Our type of work uh is uh, it's just.
No, right. I understand, but if during the course of the day, it's staggered times, you know, eight people need to. Eight, eight drivers need to start their trucks up and idle them. Each truck is idling for fifteen minutes, which is like two hours of idling time, right?
Yeah, which assumes that everybody um. Um, goes um every day, starts their truck and goes to work, goes to work. We are over the road truckers, which means we're. Almost days at a time. So it could be two, three, four, five days on the road. So. I mean. That cuts it down significantly.
George has a question, Mister Chairman.
George?
Thank you. Um, following up on that, um, what you were asking about Charles. Um, sorry about the background noise. Um, when um. I wanted to ask the applicant, um, it's um. Implied or or clear that there wouldn't be any idling during the uh quiet hours from ten PM to seven AM?
Um. Yes, I would say if, 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 um, if that happens, it's um. It would be on a very rare occasion, some kind of emergency. Something happened that I have to get up in the middle of the night. Um, start the truck, warm it up for a couple of minutes and uh go somewhere because I was called in uh to. Take care of something that uh was, it's wasn't planned ahead of time.
Um. Okay, um. And um, when you were talking before about coming back from a trip and um. Uh, you know, that might be in the evening. Are you saying you would commit to not arriving back? That you would, you would be arriving back before ten PM? So you wouldn't, you nor anyone else would be arriving after ten PM?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that if I, if I uh. If I get to Greenfield. After ten PM. I'm gonna come and park the truck and go home. I'm not idling the truck. I'm just pulling in the. Parking lot and uh shutting everything down and going home. I'm not gonna. Sit on the road. Uh, half a night because. I don't, I don't understand why I have to do that. It's like me coming home from work, uh, middle of the night. Everybody sometimes come home, comes home, uh, middle of the night. You. You come home, park your car and go inside. So it's no different.
I was using the guideline of your proposed hours of operation.
That, that, yeah, for the most part, but I'm saying in, if that happens from time to time, uh, I don't wanna be held to that uh. A hundred percent of the time because sometimes it happens. Uh, you get home. You might get stuck in traffic or whatever. You come home later than you expected.
Thank you.
Um, so Eric, I guess this is a question for you. I mean, I mean, the, this, the business that, that we're, that we're talking about is. The, um, is, is a trucking firm. So that's, that's sort of what we're calling this, that's what we're calling Eugene's business and. And um, as defined in the ordinance, there's no sort of specific. Hours of operation that, that, that a trucking firm is held to. Is that, is that right? Eric?
Sorry about that. I was muted. That is correct. That's correct.
Okay. Um. So I mean, I, it's, it's, it seems as though the, the, the businesses are, are allowed by right with, with site plan review. And we have to, we have to find a pathway here to, to uh. To allow the business to operate, but at the same time be a good neighbor. And um, and that, and that, you know, that's, that, that's the challenge here. Um, that, that, that I see and uh. We welcome any further thoughts, you know, from the board on how you might achieve this. Um. Uh, Mark, not, Mark, I put you on the spot, but I did see you, you came in prior to our deliberation and and review of this and. Um, I could, I could um, uh, raise you to be a full voting member if you'd like to contribute to discussion and and vote on this.
Is, is it only possible for me to participate in discussion if I'm actually voting in as a full voting member for the meeting?
No, no, it's not.
If you just need me to vote, I'm happy to vote too, and I'm, I'm certainly happy to participate in the discussion. So whatever you need to do procedurally to pull me in is fine.
Yeah, well, no, you can, you can, you can deliberate without being a voting member, so.
Well, let me tell you the piece that's actually kind of still sticking out for me a little bit in terms of. Our obligations. This, this whole thing is the most complex issue I've seen in my short time. Sitting on the, I mean, it's only been six months and this is the most convoluted, complex issue that I've seen in that time thus far. Um, I'm, I'm a little bit confused because I'm, I'm looking at the, um, within the application. On page fifteen, um, this is part of the comments from Inspector Snow. So at the bottom of his comments, he's talking about the performance standards um within general industry. And, and again, so we're, we're in this situation. We're talking about the, the, the absolute boundary of the general industry zone. But the performance standards within general industry, it's saying is uh. No sound, noise, vibration, odor shall be observable without instruments. More than four hundred and fifty feet from the boundaries of that originating premise. So here's like, part of my question, I guess, is actually like, I'm kind of bad spatially, but it seems to me that four hundred and fifty feet is not very much. It, it seems to me like four hundred and fifty feet would kind of be like houses right across the street. From this property on well, street. Am I wrong in my? Take on this?
I, I, I think it's four hundred and fifty feet from the property line. So, you know, that's like a football field and a half.
That doesn't mean much to me because I don't really, I, length or width of a football field. I don't even know what that means. But I guess, guys, here's my question. If that's the standard, can, can we meet that standard or are we setting people up to be in violation in perpetuity? It feels like there's already a lot of violations that need to be addressed. We're looking at this whole site plan review as part of that, but are we approving something that's gonna continually be an issue? If you can't have sound, noise, vibration, odor or flashing. More than four hundred and fifty feet away within this.
Yeah, I mean, four hundred, four hundred and fifty feet is, if you think about, if, if, if an average lot is, if you know. Zoning wise, an average lot is like sixty feet wide, say, and so forty five feet would be, would be eight houses away. Or, or across the street and maybe, maybe, maybe five houses away.
Yeah, okay, okay. So that's a little more than I was picturing in my head. So that is helpful. Uh, that's the immediate question that I have. And then I get, I'm, you know, I'm sitting here and I'm just still kind of going through this and trying to piece all of these different recommendations and violations together. And I. I guess I'm just a little unclear of like, is there anything that can be done to start rectifying this property before we? Take a vote on this site plan review. It kind of feels like we're gonna. I'm afraid that we're gonna approve stuff that's still not gonna be happening.
Yeah, well, the tricky, what, what, what's tricky here is that, is that the uses are, are, are allowed by right. And so. And so um, uh, if, if the uh. If, if, if the applicant, you know, is, is following, is following the ordinance and. And putting into place the measures that the, the DPW and planning board are recommending. Um, you know, we, we, we are, we're, 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 we're put in a very difficult position where, where we're obligated to approve this. Knowing that there are, there are, there are issues at, at hand that have to be dealt with, which becomes sort of an enforcement issue. And so, and so I think that what we, one of the things we can do is, is, is approve, is, is approve it or, or, you know, if we decide that's what we're gonna do. With conditions um that have to do, I think, with, with, with trying to, with, 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 with trying to um make suggestions that. Is gonna, is gonna make, make, make them a better neighbor in terms of things like, you know, the idling and the coming and going at night and, you know. Jay, maybe JS Ray doesn't take those side streets. I don't know if they're taking the side streets or not, but. Somewhere it was mentioned that trucks were going quickly down the side streets. And so maybe the JS Ray folks adhere to the, adhere to the same trucking routes. Site access routes that, that the trucking firm adheres to, you know, stay off the side roads. Things like that. Um. Watering down the uh, the, 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 the yard. I, I assume it's the JS Ray yard that's creating the dust, not the trucking yard? Is that, is that, is that right?
It's mostly the JS Ray yard, yes. Correct.
So there's, there's measure, there's measures they can take.
I wanna make a comment as the applicant.
Yes?
Um. The mixing plant right across from the rail tracks.
Mm hmm.
That, that location makes far more noise. And um, I have a feeling some of the neighbors might be. Um. Might be taking it, uh, uh, taking it on us. When it's honestly, if you go any, any time of the day, when the mixing plant is in operation, it's very noisy. Um, the noise we make doesn't come even close to the kind of noise comes out of that mixing plant. So I'm just. Uh, wanna be on record as saying that. Um. Four hundred feet. We, we, we're not the. Uh, we're not breaking any noise ordinance. If we were to take the four hundred feet uh buffer from the property line. The problem is that the, the neighbors are within four hundred feet, which.
Right, there's, there's, there's folks living across the street and next door and. Um, you know, all in, and there's, there's, there's a lot of people within four or five houses. Um, of, of, of your, of your place of operation that are all within that. I'm, I'm assuming would all be within that one hundred, that four hundred and fifty foot zone. Um.
Oh, I can commit to doing our best to keep uh, uh, keep it. Oh, I can commit to doing our best to keep, uh, uh, keep it, uh, dust free in the sense that, uh, um, I think I need to reinforce to J S Ray to be a little more, um, slow down a little bit, uh, and, uh, stuff like that, but, uh, uh, it's not like we're trying to, be bad neighbors. Uh, we're trying our best to be good neighbors because, I mean, that's, uh, we're trying.
Right.
As far as the routes for J S Ray, um, they, they do work all over town. So, I mean, I don't know, I have to ask them, but sometimes they, they work on side streets. I mean, it's, um, they're digging into the, the gas lines and whatever they're doing.
Right, right. But, but just in terms of, of accessing, you know, the, the truck lot, they could try and, you know, restrict their travel to, you know, you know, they're at a specific job, they get to a main feeder street, and then they, you know, they, they get to Well Street by, by, by mains, by, by feeder streets as opposed to, you know, little neighborhood streets. So, you know, they come up Arch Street, or not, not our street, Allen Street, and then, you know, come down Well Street, or they, or they, or they act, or they get to Well Street from, Silver Street.
Yeah, well, I, I witnessed them, uh, for the most part, use the same routes we are. I, I don't believe I've seen them come off, uh, side streets. But at the same time, there's a lot, a lot of other trucks that come through, um, come down, uh, uh, Wall Street, because there's also a bunch of other businesses close to us, um, like the, um, solar panel place, and, uh, so there's a lot of deliveries during the day, which a lot more traffic, a lot more truck traffic, uh, during the day that has nothing to do with us.
Right. Well, there are any, any, any more comments from, from the board? Or Eric, any, any final comments from you?
Yes, I just would like to make a final comment on the zoning so that everybody has a complete understanding of what your responsibilities are legally by state law. So because our zoning ordinance classifies these uses that are happening at three forty-seven Well Street by right with site plan review, you cannot deny their application legally unless there's a significant health or safety issue involved that can't be mitigated through conditions of approval. So I just wanna make that very clear to everyone here who's listening to this meeting that the board has to approve this. They cannot say, no, you cannot do this business here, uh, because it's specifically zoned for such businesses. That's all I wanted to say, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks. I mean, I think, I think there, there are neighbors here who, who would say that there are, you know, significant, um, there are butters here who would say that there are significant health and, health and safety issues, you know, uh, uh, around this. And, um, so how do we, how, how do we balance, you know, our, our obligations, you know, against, against something that's, that, that, that is, that is inherently subjective?
Well, Mr. Chairman, first, I would just like to make one additional comment, and that is, I see no safety issues here if the truck routes are followed. I see no safety issues here. The health issue, it's possible that some dust in the air could create some issues, but that can be mitigated through the watering on dry days. It's possible that sedimentation going into the stormwater drain system could be detrimental, maybe not to humans, but to the environment. But the condition has to involve safety and health to humans.
Well, I mean, there's, I mean, there, there's, you know, there's, there's the, there's the sound of trucks idling, and there's, there's, there's the exhaust that comes out of idling trucks. And, uh, you know, you, you, you know, noise pollution is, 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 uh, is, is, is a documented form of, you know, of, 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 to me, documented health issue. You know, the diesel exhaust, you know, for long periods of time, you know, is, 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 is not good.
But all these are existing uses in the GI, including the businesses surrounding this particular business. They all have trucks, every single one of them would be a safety issue and a health issue if we go by that logic.
Okay. Well, do, do, does the board wanna discuss possible, um, thoughts about how we might, mitigate the, uh, the issues, George?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I think, um, for me, it's, um, looking at both guidance from the, uh, proposed parameters of operation and, um, the guidance from the, um, ordinance around, uh, noise, uh, specifically not having particularly loud or disruptive noises, um, between the hours of ten P M and seven A M. And, and I, I'll confess, I'm a bit, um, uncomfortable about, um, it, it looks like pretty specific hours of operation are proposed, but I'm hearing, um, from the applicant that there would be, that wouldn't be absolute. There might be some times when, uh, so during the, um, the trucking firm, um, is those, um, same hours in which, uh, the noise is not, um, required to be avoided? But, um, it sounds like the applicant can't commit to really sticking with those hours of operation. And I, I, I don't know how can, it just feels a little bit like a slippery slope of how often, you know, a truck might be arriving after those hours or something might happen to have to, you know, come in to start up a truck during those hours. I'm a little concerned, um, especially in kind of the, I'm, I'm not presuming future conduct, but just, um, you know, there's been issues about trying to, you know, get things back on track with following, um, procedure and process. And, uh, so I'm just concerned, um, it, it sounds like it's, it's hard to, uh, based on the nature of the business, uh, the applicant is saying, to adhere to those proposed hours of operation. And, you know, trucks coming in or out and, um, idling would seem to me to be outside the parameters of what is expected by the noise ordinance. The, the idling, and I think that's the only idling we can really have an impact on because that's the noise from the idling. As Eric was mentioning, the idling, uh, law is something that's, uh, enforceable by, uh, law enforcement, um, not by the board. Those are some, I have, thanks.
Right. It sounds like there's a disconnect between the idling law and what, what's actually required to, to fire up one of these trucks, um, in the, in the winter time. But I, 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 there's, and, and the, and the hours of operation, yeah, people, truckers are gonna come and go. And is there, is there a way to sort of limit, um, to, to, to say trucks aren't gonna start before, start idling before seven o'clock in the morning, Eugene?
Say again, please?
Is it possible to, uh, to, the, the trucks won't, won't be started, won't start idling before seven o'clock in the morning?
I, I don't know what to say because if I have a delivery, let's say in Boston, at six in the morning, um, and it's winter time, what do I do? I, um, I stop somewhere and sleep in the truck with the truck idling because you cannot start, uh, sleep, uh, with a truck, uh, not idling winter time. So my logic is, uh, if the truck is home, let's say I got home, uh, on a Friday, and the load delivers Monday. I come home, park the truck, and either, uh, leave, uh, the night before or get up earlier in the morning, uh, start the truck, uh, let it come to temperature about ten minutes, and then, uh, go, uh, go ten, fifteen minutes and go deliver my load. Uh, so, I mean, uh, all I'm saying is, sometimes it happens that, um, the truck has to be, idling, idle. But at the same time, it's not such a small property that, uh, a truck idling is not as loud as people might. I don't know. I mean, a loud pickup truck might be, a pickup truck might be louder than a semi truck. It depends how it's, uh, um, set up. I mean, I, I, our trucks are not very loud. If I was to measure with the, like, uh, um, uh, what do you call those, um, decibel meters? I, I have to spend a little more time to look at the, um, the noise ordinance, but I don't think we come even close to, uh, the, the noise, we, we don't surpass the noise ordinance, the decibel.
Yeah, well, so I guess, uh, it's, you know, that, that stuff's all subjective. That's, that's the difficult thing about this. I mean, the four hundred and fifty foot distance is, is, you're not supposed to be able to hear it, you know, within, you know, if you're four hundred and fifty feet away. And I, I, I don't, I, I, I don't know if a truck idling engine carries four hundred and fifty feet or not. Or no.
I don't, I don't believe it says to hear it. I think it's a certain decibel level.
Well, it says detectable, um, observable without instruments, yes, that means you can hear it. Human, the healthy human ear can hear it.
Four hundred feet away.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's any decibel reference, and, um, for overnight hours, it, again, as you say, is subjective. It says particularly loud or disruptive. There's no, um, objective standard.
Right.
That I'm aware of.
Eugene, can you say again about the J S Ray trucks? When are they moving about, what times of day?
I was told the seven A M to seven P M.
Are, are, so they're your tenants, is that correct? Like, do you have a, a lease agreement with them?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Yeah, cuz I'm just thinking that if there's anything out of compliance or any sort of contingency that we're making, um, you know, you as the, the landlord, um, you know, you're the one we're, we're talking to. And so just thinking about that contingent, the, whatever contingencies we make, you know, we wanna make sure that, that your tenant as well is, is in compliance if, if that isn't happening, for example, with the dust and things like that. So just wanted to understand more of that formal relationship.
Well, with the dust, we never, uh, looked at that, but if that's a problem, yeah. Sometimes summertime when there's a long stretch of, um, uh, dryness, yeah, I can, um, I can see that. And so I, I think we would, uh, I certainly would be willing to, um, deal with that a little better, a little better. And at the same time, talk to J S Ray and reinforce, and, um, let him know that, uh, it's not acceptable for them to start, uh, before seven A M. I think some of their employees might, uh, show up. I think they sometimes show up a little early, uh, six thirty, but they, um, they, they start at seven o'clock.
They start, seven o'clock is when they start backing up their trucks and making the beep, beep, beep noise and all that stuff?
I, I think there's seven, like, they, they punch in or whatever they're, I mean, I can, I can pass along to them to, uh, to tell them, uh, I can tell them to, uh, not make any noise before seven. I can do that. But I can't, I mean, if there's gonna be other complaints, I guess we'll find out, but I can't, um, be there to make sure that they comply.
Eugene, what are your, what are your thoughts about, about the, uh, the DPW recommendations of the, uh, of the, of the paved apron and the, uh, the, the new drainage swale to, to fill throughout some of this element?
Yeah, I, I, I wanna say, um, I wanna go and talk to them and understand exactly what the, their proposal is, and, uh, let's see how, um, we can go about, um, taking care of that. I just wanna, um, I wanna take care of that issue, but I need to understand a little, uh, more what exactly they are talking about as far as, um, solving that.
Okay. Yeah. Understood. Well, yeah. I mean, it, it has to sort of be, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's an engineered solution. It's not advanced engineering, but it just needs, it needs to be thought about and designed. And so maybe they, they can, they can sort of guide you in the right direction for, for how to do that.
Yeah, I didn't know about, um, I, I, this first time I'm hearing about this proposal. So I'm gonna follow up and, um, talk to somebody at DPW about this.
Mr. Chairman?
George? Yes, Eric?
Uh, let George go first.
Yeah.
Thank you.
George?
Yeah, I, I feel a need to return to the hours of operation question. I, and I understand, um, you're gonna advise your tenant, um, of the seven A M to seven P M, and you wouldn't necessarily be able to monitor them, but, uh, you assume if there were reports from the neighbors, that would be, um, indication of it being different. But your own operation, um, of the seven A M to seven, to ten P M, I'm sorry. I, I'm still a little, that looks firm on paper, and I heard you say, well, there might be an occasional emergency that I need to come in during the night and start up a truck, or there might be some, some, um, problem I have on the road, and so I'll arrive later than ten P M. But I also thought I, I heard you saying sometimes you might have a scheduled delivery resulting in you needing to, um, start up idle and, and, uh, your truck can leave, uh, before seven A M. So I'm just, it, it just feels like a slippery slope of, you know, what is really, what are clearly the hours of, of regular operation as opposed to kind of some emergency factor? So I, I'm just, I'm having a little discomfort about that. Cuz that, that hours of operation period does, as I say, coincide with the period where noise is not, um, particularly, but, um, outside of those hours, it is. And I just wanna understand, what does it mean saying these are the hours of operation?
Well, um, means that's, I was asked, it's hard to put a exact time, um, hours of operation. So in general, I wanna say in general, that's, uh, hours of operation. But trucking is not your typical, uh, uh, seven to five kinda, kind of business. I mean, stuff happens, has to be taken care of. So, I mean, I, I don't know what else to say.
I mean, Eugene, it's not, one of the things you mentioned was it, was it sort of sounds like there's, there's kind of like two things that happen. One is trucks coming and going when they need to come, and the hours of operation being when there's somebody on site and you're, you're kind of repairing trucks, working in the yard. Is, is, is that right?
Yeah, uh, if, if I have to change a tire or something like that, yeah, that's taking care of during the day. But, uh, um, if I come home, home from a trip and it just so happens that I arrive after ten P M, I'm still gonna come home, park the truck and go home. That's all I'm saying.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Eric?
Uh, just a little bit on the hours of operation. You can, as a board, say that the hours of operation in the morning start at seven so that no one can get in the truck before seven and start it and idle the truck. Coming back at night is a different issue. You know, I, I don't see how you could control that or why you'd want to control that. Coming back and parking your truck and going home is different than getting there in the morning and starting up the truck and idling it so it reaches temperature. You can do the seven AM, but let the trucks come in when, you know, if there's a situation like that where they can just park and go home.
Yeah.
See, those are two different things.
So, so what, what, what do you do when there's like, you know, a seven o'clock delivery in, in, in Boston as, as Eugene, you know, pointed out and you got, you gotta, you gotta get the truck going at like five or six in the morning?
You can't do it because you're, you're approving this at seven AM. Simple as that. He would have to do his routes so they start at seven AM.
Okay.
Hey, Charles, I don't know if you can see all the videos, but there is a resident, Tammy Jurwitz is waving her hand and trying to be recognized.
Um, I don't know if you're like, if we're allowed that or what, but if nothing else, just know that she is trying to be recognized. Uh, thanks. Yeah. So I guess, I guess, um, I, uh, if, 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 I'm sorry, Tammy, your name didn't show up here. Um, there it is. Yeah. Uh, do you, if you, if you, I don't want, I, I hesitate to open up the, the floor to everybody because it, because there could be, could be here for a while, but if you have something that you'd like to add that you feel is, is, is additional information that we haven't, um, discussed or, or, or have sort of like access to, um, I'm, I'm inclined to give you a couple of minutes.
I don't know that I have any information that you don't have. I'm just gonna give you a little bit of rebuttal to Eugene. I live within earshot of all his stuff and I can hear him multiple, not him personally, but I can hear trucks multiple times a week idling oftentimes before five AM. So I get his business and I get what he's doing. But if he's gonna sit there and say seven AM is when they start and that it's infrequent that it's prior to that, I have to disagree. And J S Ray, they start oftentimes before seven as well. Because nine times out of ten, when they're at a, when they're working a job, they have to be at the job by seven o'clock. So they're not gonna come to the yard at seven o'clock and load their truck.
Um, okay.
It's, that's all I have to say. I'm not, I'm just saying Eugene gets to voice what he's trying to do and what he wants to do. And I'm just here to tell you that I've been in my house for fourteen years. And until this, I wasn't hearing idling trucks before five AM.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I mean, there, there's two issues here. One is, one is J S Ray coming and going, you know, you know, before seven AM. I sort of feel like that's, like that's something we can deal with. We can say, you know, hours of operation are seven o'clock. You can't, you, you, you can't come on site and be making, making a, making a lot of noise and disrupting the neighborhood before seven o'clock. I mean, I think, I think, I think the, the, the nature of, of, of truck driving is, and you know, of the over the road truck driving is, is, is a little more complex because they have an early morning delivery, they gotta, they gotta start their trucks up, um, and, and, uh, to get on, to get on the road. So I don't, I don't know how to deal with that. Um, if we, if we were, if we were to say that, you know, you can't, sorry, you can't, you can't, you can't start idling before seven, then there's this, there's a certain amount of business that's gonna be lost.
Shouldn't that have been taken into consideration when he decided to put that kind of a business in this kind of an area?
No, because this kind of business is allowed in this kind of area. So by rights, I'm allowed to have this kind of business.
Yeah, it's a, it's a tricky one. Um, uh, George?
Yeah, um, I, I appreciated Eric's feedback. I don't know, um, we were obviously trying to, um, provide a legally supportable, um, site plan review and conditions. Um, and it has to take into account, um, you know, the, the rights of the business to, um, uh, function there and it also has to take into account the other, uh, considerations, um, about it being, um, a budding neighborhood. And, um, I don't know that it's our responsibility to, um, accommodate, uh, earlier morning, uh, start times. So I, I'm just, I'm getting the, the challenge of that. And I'm, uh, appreciating Eric's distinction about someone, you know, getting back later than expected and not wanting them as Eugene was talking about, to be sitting for half the night, um, in a rest stop or something like that. But the planned departures and starting up of the, the equipment before seven, I don't know that we need to, uh, we would be obliged to accommodate that, um, even if it's a preference. Um, so my inclination would be to, uh, have a condition be that for neither of these uses to, to hold to the proposed, um, um, uh, hours of operation, literally as far as at seven AM is the earliest the trucks can be started for either, um, either function, either the parts of the site, J S Ray or the trucking firm part.
Eric, is it, does the planning board have the authority to, to control hours of operation like that for, for a trucking industry in terms of when they're, when they're gonna start their trucks and leave the site?
Yes, of course you do.
Yeah. Um, Michael, I, I opened the door, so it's, uh, you can, you, you, you can step in, but please, but, um, yeah, I appreciate just gravity. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I have all, I'm gonna keep it short. All right. Thank you. First, what's important about this, and I've had this debate with Eric on the phone and Eric seems like a great guy in his business, but, uh, industry district is to provide light industry manufacturing, which does not intrude on the residential areas. To me, that is key. And business have rights, if they have rights in certain confinement and conditions. Now, what's going on over there at three forty seven Wells Street, in my opinion? And, uh, and I've done a little bit of reading about this. Yes, trucking firm, but we're talking about with, as far as like the quote unquote for, they are freight liners. It's a whole different animal and there are several cities in the state of Massachusetts and abutting states as well as a federal highway administration that have certain guidelines request, uh, uh, regarding freight, freighter, freight line trucks and freight parking lots. And that is exactly what is there and the owner actually admits it in letters. But that is a parking lot for over the road trucks. And to be a budding, a residential neighborhood is like, anything you read about those parking lots will tell you that are not recommended to be in or about or near residential areas. They should have buffering, there should be buffers with trees and bermage and all this other stuff. And we actually have in our zoning, the town zoning order, this is have regulations for parking lots. They're there. Now, if you let all this happen, but with, without having these issues be mitigated, you're, you're doing a disservice to the community. And as far, as far as the J S Ray goes, I can tell you that they start as early daily, as early as five thirty in the morning. The police have been called. My wife has called the business main office requesting that they not start till seven and all they do is blow smoke up or whatever. You know what I'm about to say. I'm not gonna say it. That it, it's ridiculous, it's ongoing and it's not gonna change unless.
Oh, Michael, I think you
I can show, my video right here. I can show you a video that, that, that they idle for hours on end over there, those semi trucks, hours on end through the night sometimes. And just this past that, I called the police twice. My precinct councilor called the police twice and, and over a period of hours, the police have, I don't know if they eventually came in up, but eventually it was shut off. The, the, the truck was shut off. So they were warned by Mr. Snow's back in August that they were violating the noise ordinances. They've known all along, is it gonna take a site plan approval there to actually obey? I don't think so because first who's gonna, who, who's gonna enforce it? And, um, this is a mess. That, that requires buffering, it's a parking lot, it's a parking lot. I don't care how you, what you want to call it, rocks like a duck and it quacks like a duck, it's a duck. That is a parking lot. We have town ordinances and zoning ordinances regarding what is it's supposed, what's supposed to take place for parking lots and requirement. There is no buffer zone there. As far as the dust, the dust is not from driving row, driving in, in that fenced in yard, it's loading the topsoil home from the front end loader into the dump trucks that creates huge plumages, smoke, the dust. We've had a resident of the town move, move. She's called the police several times, nothing was done. She had to move had respiratory issues. We have a neighbor that lives down the street around the corner from, from that property who's tried to sell a house and then she can't sell it because of what's going on there. Now, this is, this needs, they need to be mitigated. I had, no, they have a right, by right, there's, there's a trucking firm, as far as I'm concerned, that they, they, well, freight, long haul freighters, they're not delivering milk. Okay, those trucks, I know, I believe there's been people sleeping in one of those trucks overnight. The red, there's a red one where I think Pennsylvania license plates are on it. The truck idles throughout the night. It's, so what are you gonna do about it? Do you put a fence around the property? It, it, that the guy would want a fence to secure those, those, those things, a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars? I would think he'd want a fence and, uh, uh, around the property. It's, it's, I don't know what you guys are gonna do about it, but I, I tell you, just at the expense having two businesses there that may or may not actually provide any income for, for, for the, generate any income for the town with the exception of paying very low property tax, less than I do, which is a whole point unto itself. Um, what? So they're gonna, gonna do what they want to do at the expense of the residents? That's just right. And I don't, you know, whether it's a G I or not, it's like supposed to be light industry. Running heavy equipment, front end loaders, huge dump trucks, semi tractor trailers is not light industry. And it needs some, it doesn't get resolved. I'm not speaking for myself here. I'm speaking for all the people that signed that piece of paper.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did you have one more thing to say?
I've got a lot to say, man. I got a lot to say. I'll just hold my tongue. It, it, it is, is, I, I appreciate Eric's knowledge, but I, I have, I, I, I'm speaking for the guy. But this, uh, somebody's under pressure here. I don't know if it's, if the mayor is insisting that no matter what the business is, we need business in town and I'm all, I'm pro business. And all of my neighbors are not, are, are pro business, but it, but can't be at the expense of the residents. Value is our taxes keep going up, but my resale value of homes aren't, they're going down. This is ridiculous. Now, I, you know, that's a, the mayor want a business in town no matter what it is?
Okay, Michael, thank you. Um, George?
Thank you, Charles. Um, I'm looking at the, uh, uh, G I District, General Industry District, um, portion of the zoning ordinance, which does, um, uh, generally referred to light industry and manufacturing, and it also, under the uses permitted, just for people's, um, understanding, it does say trucking firm, it also says, um, freight transport terminal. Um, and it also says, um, contractors yard, open storage of raw materials, um, and equipment. Um, so I just wanted to, there are, um, you know, different to that generalized light industry description, there are real specific categories, um,
Right.
that are, that are included. So I just wanted to, because this is something not everyone, you know, has that easy access to. So I just wanted to.
Right, and I'll, thank you, George. And also, you know, the difference between there's, there's light industry and there's heavy industry and, you know, I guess, I guess heavy, heavy industry would be like, you know, gas refineries and chemical plants and I, I don't even know where you draw the line between light industry and heavy industry, but there's a lot of industries out there that are a lot that, that it would have a, that have a, a, a much heavier footprint even than what we're talking about here. So, um, but I, 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 I understand, um, it's, 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 uh, it's, again, it's one of those uh, shades of gray. Um, I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't want to just, um, uh, um, procrastinate here, but I'm, I'm wondering, I'm wondering if it makes sense to, to take some, take, take some of the information that we've heard and, and, and think about what's, what sort of, um, what, what sort of uh, recommendations we can, we can put on this that are, that are justifiable in terms of, I thought about the idea of, of like fencing in the yard also. So that, uh, as, as, as a, as an acoustic barrier and as, and as a barrier to headlights from the trucks, you know, fencing in the, fencing in the trucking yard. Um, you know, what, and, and what about landscaping and, and is it a parking lot? And, you know, to Michael's point, and, you know, should we be, should we be asking, you know, to have those some sort of, you know, trees for, you know, that, that would be in, in, in the spirit of, of parking, parking bylaws and things like that. Um, and just, and, and considering all this in, in a very thoughtful way, because I mean, this is, it's a thorny issue. And, and we're, and we're, we, we, uh, I, I, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's, 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 it's an obvious answer. But I, I would like to think that there is a way, that there is a way that we could to bring, bring everybody into harmony somehow. George?
Yeah, um, considering how you were saying and how Mark was saying earlier about the complexity of this situation. Um, I want with you, uh, Charles or Erica, what is the, uh, timeframe for us needing to make a, um, uh, decision on this?
Forty-five days.
From?
And when was the application submitted, um?
George, do you have your zoning ordinance with you?
Of course.
Uh, could you check, yeah, section two hundred dash eight point four? It will answer that question.
Thank you.
The date of the application.
And, and, and this, and when, and when, when was this application officially submitted?
October twenty first. I believe we have forty-five days to make a decision from October twenty first.
Well, that's coming right up.
Yes.
Yeah, it's three days less than eight weeks. So that's three days less than six weeks.
Yep, forty-five days, as you, as you knew, Eric.
So I, I don't have my calendar, but, but my, 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 my head calendar, my mental calendar says it. That's, you know, six weeks from the twenty-first would be, uh, November. That's, that's kind of this week, isn't it?
Yeah, I think we have a couple of days left. That's it. So.
I think it's December fifth.
Mark?
So I guess the pressure is on. Uh, listen, just to try to bring the, I, Charles, I guess I just want to go on the record of saying that I think, you know, the recommendations that are being put forth, both by the D P W. and the planning department all sit well with me. I think the place that it feels like something is missing is again, kind of what creates the compromise. I appreciate certain things are available or accessible by right within a particular zone. We are literally talking about the boundary of that very zone. So it just feels to me like there is something around, how do you make this work and keep neighbors happy? Like, you know, there's other issues here, I think, even around like the other property. There's so many concerns that the neighbors are bringing up. But for our purposes and what we can control and what we can do to try to address some of these concerns, what's really resonating for me is the notion of asking for more of a buffer. I really do support some of the hours that we're talking about. But I think fencing, tree lines, landscaping, some stuff that absorbs both dust, noise, light and sight would really make a difference for me feeling more comfortable about moving this forward. So I do support the current recommendations, but they just feel like they're not enough. Um, and to me, like, if we started to talk about the exploration of how do we create more of a buffer on that property, that would start to feel like enough. Again, as the new guy, I don't know exactly what our rights are, how far we can take that, et cetera. But it feels to me like that's where the solution lies. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. Those, those are, those are thoughtful words and I, 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 I agree with them. And Eric, what, what are the limitations of, of conditions we can, we can put on this?
Uh, well, first I want to just mention that the concrete batch plant that is right next door to this property, this planning board approved that a few years ago. You did not require fencing around the entire property or landscaping as you're suggesting now. And, and that, that operation is much more noise than this trucking firm. And you did not put out such conditions for, for them. Um, and it's right next door. It, it's not like it's way into the zone. It's right there, right next to this property. So there is a limit on what you can do as a planning board for conditions before it starts getting into what I call exactions or offsite improved, uh, exactions from the, from a applicant and a property owner that could lead to illegal, legal matters.
Okay. Um, Michael, I'll, I'll give you a quick window.
Yeah. Just play as far as the, the concrete batch. First off, that what they weren't an issue. It's, well, decided to remove the buffer. They, they came through and they removed all of these tabby. I'm sure you remember that, right? And, um, so it's been quite annoyed since, since that's occurred. The railroad removed that buffer zone. Secondly, they're nine, they're eight, seven, eight, nine. Yeah, they're noisy as hell and it's a, it, it, it's aggravating. But they have consistent hour, you know, and they don't work on the weekends. On, next door here is again, J S Ray, they get early. And they have not been cooperative to this date and that, that even though they put a screened up fence, it's not creating a buffer. Uh, it's not helping with the dispersment of dust. And my tractor trailers go. I mean, there's no buffer with them at all. And they come out of that driveway and they're shining their light right across the street into the neighbor's bedroom. And, um, so, you know, as much as, as much as the fence in without a permit, um, you're fenced around the whole property. The only issue with the fence that, that, that's already been installed is what they did with the excavating involved before they put the fence in and nobody's talked about that. They have a right for a permit to change the, the, the flow of water. They literally excavated that property, put drainage pipe in, T R. G., covered it. They did it all on the weekend. And, uh, so that's a whole other issue you guys may or may not want to pursue. But, um.
Okay, Michael, thank you. Um, there's a couple of other people who want to, who want to speak quickly. Counselor Ricketts?
Hi, thank you. I'll, I'll be brief. I, I don't live in precinct three, but I'm a councilor at large, so I do care about, you know, the city at large. I guess I wanted to say that it seems like the hours of operation is the biggest thorn for, you know, the residents there. And I wondered if it would be worth even getting a report from the police department about the number of complaints to help you really see the, the times that the police are called and see how much, you know, they're really adhering to it. So we can see if the morning time is the worst or coming in later is the worst. And I'm kind of sorry that you're on the clock right now. Seems like there's a lot of things that have been brought forward and I feel like you probably need some more time to really do this well. Um, you brought up a great point about nearby businesses that have even more sound and you're not making them do certain things. So I feel like you're sort of gonna have to be careful now.
Right.
So, um, go with God. I'm so sorry, but I, I think it's gonna need more work. So I think you're gonna need more time. But I think the hours of operation is the biggest problem right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we, do we feel like, do, do we, so we're, we're kind of up, we're kind of up against the wall with the clock, Eric. We don't, we, if, if it's, if it's, if it's, if it's the fifth, that's, that's Saturday. That's our forty-five days is up on Saturday. I don't want to meet Saturday morning. So we, so we, or, or tomorrow. So we, um, I think we have to start thinking about, um, about, um, voting on this and bringing, bringing the discussion to a close unless there's, there's any more conversation or, or input from other members of the board at this point. George?
Well, just point out that you would need for any additional meeting, you would need forty-eight hours notice.
Right, so we can't do it anyway.
Yeah, so we, we gotta resolve this tonight.
Right. Um.
Charles, I'm curious what folks think would be like in a helpful and appropriate vegetative or other sort of buffering that would help in a real way? Yeah, I know, Mark, you, you threw that out there, but in your mind, are there, like, is it a wall of arborvitae? Like, what, what would, what would make an actual real difference in the real world?
In my head, Jamie, that is kind of what I was thinking about was what if there was some thickly packed, kind of tall, dense arboretum that was really providing both a visual screen, perhaps a little bit of even kind of a dust catcher from that parking lot, um, would block some of the light. It just felt like it would serve as a good buffer. So that is what I was thinking of in terms of vegetation. Yeah. Um, listen, I just want to throw out there too, though, like the, the whole notion of, I feel like what I'm hearing is like, well, it's by right and there's nothing else that you can do because anything else would be like, you know, indefensible or not a valid finding. But at the same time, like, I don't, what, what a different composition of the planning board did a few years ago around a different site, like what's in front of us here is, is this. And I guess, so that's what I'm reacting to. So if you're telling me that we have no authority or ability to do anything more because of all this, then let's just pass this thing. But if there's room to do something more, that's where I think that we should be trying to kind of dig in. And I.
Well, yeah.
It's a market that's such pressure here, but I don't, I mean, if there's nothing more we can do, then we shouldn't be talking about it, right?
Well, I, I appreciate your point. I mean, I mean, this isn't an exact parallel because of the, because of the hours of operation where, you know, trucks are coming and going.
And, and.
Hours, seven days a week, whereas the, the, the batch plant is open. I don't, I don't know what their hours of operation are. It doesn't sound like, it doesn't sound like they're, they're running seven days a week, though, twenty-four hours a day.
And did any site plan review there come with significant community and like a butter concerns? Like, you know what I mean? Like, I think it's that, to me, that's what I feel like we're trying to address here is the butter concerns. All of this stuff that's by right, all of these recommendations are in front of us and they make perfect sense. And again, I would support all of them, including the business hours. But it seems like if it was possible to just go a little further and ask for the creation of a, of a better buffer zone, that that would really acknowledge that there, this is literally on the border of this zone. Um, and it seems like it would help generate a fair amount of goodwill and might generate more of the residential community that these abutters are saying they want to have. Um, I appreciate the need for consistency and I certainly appreciate wanting to cast legal indefensible votes. Um, but if there's a place or a way to do something along those lines of the vegetation, it feels to me like that could help create some solutions.
Yeah, Eric, so on the, on the cement plant, when, when, when was that reviewed by the planning board? Was that, I don't think, I don't remember doing that one. Was that before I was involved?
We have a counselor disorder with their hand up.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, counselor disorder. Yes.
Um, I sat in on that one and learned all about how cement was made. Um, that is, um, that was in a, it's, that is on the end of Cleveland Street. There were vacant houses there. We had Noah Butters that were coming to the meeting that were concerned. So I think although that is nearby, apples and oranges, this is a neighborhood of people. And I would just like to echo the things that were said by some of the constituents who are speaking that this actually is happening and it's happening all throughout the night. I have, um, it, it, it is more than fifteen minutes. It's, it, J S Ray starts at five forty-five in the morning so that they can be on their site at seven A. M. But the other idling problem with the eighteen-wheelers is something that happens every day, every night. It is always for over the Massachusetts general law and it doesn't stop.
Yeah.
And so I don't know about all of the legal ramifications, but something that happens every day on a daily basis that's against the, the Massachusetts general law that there is a fine for. We have the highest fines in the nation. And I, I just think you need to take in your head, one person had to move and another person can't open her windows. There's a lot there. And no one's making this up. I have all these videos. You know me, it's there. They're on there. You've seen them. That's all. Over and out.
Thank you. Um. So Eric, what, what, what about the idea of, of, you know, it sounds like this isn't an exact parallel to the cement plant and that, and that there is, there, there, there is, there is enough of a difference here where maybe we could start, start crafting some, some ideas about, about how to create screening. Um, it would, it might, it would soften this and block sound and, and block light. Um.
Was that a question, Mr. German?
Yeah, yeah, just wondering if, if, if you, that was a question. Yeah, if you, if you think we're within our, we're within our bounds to do that, given that this is, this is not really a parallel situation. It's not, it's not an equal.
Yeah, I didn't say mean to, it suggested it was an exact situation where I was trying to say that are both located in the same district fairly close to another. There is residences, there are residences in that area. There may not be as many, but there are. You know, one person is just as important as ten. Uh, I'm saying that this is a gray area, you know? Case law shows that, you know, our planning boards on a by right use go above and beyond what the ordinance says. Uh, acquiring conditions that may be above and beyond reasonableness, then, you know, you're subject to a legal challenge. But I also wanted to say that you can always ask any applicant if they're willing to do something and get their direct response.
Yeah. So Eugene, what about, what, what about the idling question? I mean, you know, it sounds like, you know, the, 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 that, that the trucks are, are idling for longer periods of time, like, like truckers are, like drivers are hanging out in the trucks and, you know, keeping the spaces conditioned. And is that happening?
Um, no, I, I would say not. Uh, if it happens, I'm not aware of it. I can, uh, check with some of my drivers, but, uh, I mean, normal operating procedure is you, you come park the truck and go home.
Um, right. Well, it sounds, it sounds like, I'm sorry.
Well, I mean, I understand some neighbors, uh, don't like business so close to them. But like what I'm hearing all night, every day, all day, stuff like that, it's a little bit exaggerated from my point of view.
Well, uh, it see, it seems like, it seems like the, the idling, the, the truck idling thing needs to be addressed. And if people are, are idling, if, if drivers are idling the trucks for longer than the fifteen minutes in this, in the winter when it takes to warm them up and take off, I mean, that seems to be like, um, uh, you know, a, a, an issue that, you know, you might want to, you might want to deal with, 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 with the, with the people who are parking their trucks there. And I think would be, would certainly be a condition that I think we'd want, the board would want, would want to put on, on any kind of approval here. Um, what do you, what, what are you, what are your thoughts about helping us, um, figure out how to create screens? And, uh, and, and, you know, fence, you know, solid fencing, uh, that we work with acoustic barriers and, 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 you know, sight barriers, um, and things like that along the, along Well Street?
I don't know. I mean, that's asking a lot. I'm, I'm not sure what that entails as far as expense. I mean, it's kind of, um, big burden. I mean, is that required of everybody, um, in that, uh, um, uh, zoning? Uh, I mean, I don't know. I don't want to say something and then regret saying it.
Right.
So, something, I mean, you can go crazy and please everybody, but then I'll be, I'd be out of business. So, I mean, I want to be careful what, what I, um, commit to. Um, I'm just not sure, um, what kind of financial burden that would create for myself.
Okay. Well, I understand that. I mean, I think the, um, I'm just looking, seeing. Seeing what, what some of our responsibilities are to our ability to put restrictions on things.
Hey, Charles?
Yes.
In terms of, I'm, so when I'm looking at the current zoning ordinance, I'm on page one hundred twenty-eight.
Yes, where I am.
Okay, so I'm looking at approval guidelines, E. Uh, number two, the use of landscaping to establish buffers between incompatible land uses and to screen unsightly features. Again, I feel like this is, speaks to the reality that we are literally on the line of this zone. Uh, and so it doesn't seem unreasonable to me to think that uses land to establish that buffer would be appropriate. I, I, it just seems like a very reasonable thing to ask. Um, I appreciate that Mr. Darmagev is, is expressing some reservation about making promises or guarantees have the ability to do that or, or the ability to not operate before seven. Uh, but I, again, I guess enforcement doesn't necessarily our purview. And so I don't know that we need to demand guarantees. I, I'm a little unclear where to go here because it just seems like there's a lot of concerns. It seems like what we're hearing is that the, the owner is not. I'm a little unclear where to go here because it just seems like there's a lot of concerns. It seems like what we're hearing is that the, the owner is not convinced that he'll be able to accommodate these requests and we still have to make these decisions tonight. So I, again, all of the recommendations from the, from the DPW and the planning department makes sense to me. I would advocate that the board should consider also asking for some vegetative screen and hashing that out and adding into it and, and going from there. Uh, that would be my thought, but hey, I'm the new guy and an alternate, so it's really not my decision. But I'm privileged to at least be in the position to offer my thoughts. And so there's a few more of them.
All right. Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Mark. Always appreciate it. And you know, you're not going to be able to say you're the new guy for long.
I, yeah, I heard a rumor.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with Mark on this and I think, I don't think it's unreasonable. I mean, I'm, I'm not an, an arborist. I don't know how much it would cost for this vegetative screening. Um, I don't think it would be crazy expensive. You know, it's something that if it's taken care of and watered, it will last forever. It will only improve, you know, the value of the property. And I think it would go a whole long way to mitigating and addressing a variety of, of the health and environmental and noise concerns that are being presented here. So I, I definitely think we should make it a contingency tonight.
Yeah. What, what about a combination of, of fencing and, and planting material? So you have, because the, you know, I think, you know, you, a, a line, a line of fencing. And then, and then, and then a line of planting between the fencing and the road. I'm just, just to make sure that, um, you know, headlights are, you know, headlights are minimized. When the trucks are maneuvering in the parking lot, their headlights aren't, aren't, aren't shining into the neighbors' homes and truly just when they're pulling out of the parking lot directly, that it would become an issue. And then the greenery will help, well, I think will help knock down some of the dust and, um, and also soften, um, you know, visually and, and acoustically further the, the, um, that, that, that sort of demising line. George?
Just an observation that any fencing, the board might condition is, um, my understanding is that along the, um, roadway, the frontage would have to be no more than four feet.
Unless it were. Right. Unless they, unless they wanted to apply for a special permit and get an eight foot pen.
Yep. I, I, my understanding from the applicant's response, and I, I appreciate Eric pointing that out about, you know, trying to, you know, address something directly with the applicant is that, um, uh, they're not, uh, readily inclined to, um, take on the, um, expense of, um, the, um, vegetation or the fence. So, um, I'm just pointing out from the, uh, uh, you know, requiring both would be.
Right.
An additional expectation and.
What, what, so you would, you would lobby for, you would, you would argue for one or the other, the planting or the fence?
Yeah, um. And, um, yes, I think that's right, but I'm, I'm, uh, to think of the vegetation, I, um, hadn't come in thinking about that or having researched that, so I'm not sure about the, um, expense factor. Um, and, uh, yeah, so I'm, I'm still pondering as we're talking, but I just wanted to point out about the fence height issue.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, we, we, we could either say, you know, it's either, it's either planted, you know, line of arbivide, you know, or, or, you know, at a certain height and certain spacing, or it's, you know, or it's a fence. You know, for eight feet, for which you'll have, or, or six feet, which you'll have to get a special permit.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Eric.
The planning board cannot require this applicant to go before the ZB for a discretionary permit.
Okay, that makes sense.
I'm all for the, I'm all for the arbivide because it can get quite tall and I think it will achieve multiple layers of, it'll address multiple issues that are being addressed. Particularly that this serving as a sound buffer as well.
All right. And so is this going to extend just to, would this extend just to the J S Ray contractor fencing and then stop there? Is that what we're thinking at this point for now?
Well, that fence already got built without the special permit, so it's there.
Right. I guess it would, I guess it would have to stop at the J S Ray fencing. So it would be for the truck lot.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I can say, uh, because I've dealt with arbivide is, uh, a four to five foot arbivide is about three to $400 depending where you get it.
All right. I mean, there's also, there's also, I mean, we're not, I mean, we're not necessarily landscapers, so there's a certain distance back from the road would have to be set so it wouldn't get, you know, killed by salt and plowing and everything. Um, and, and there probably have to be certain kinds of, of soil preparation for it. I mean, this is kind of like an industrial gravel lot right now, so it's probably, it's probably, I don't know how feasible it is just to, you know, plant a row of arbivide in there and hope it's going to grow. Is anybody here an arborist?
I'm, I'm Googling. That's, that's all I can do.
Okay. That's a lot.
Yeah, I, I think $300 to $400 of plant Eric seems pretty high. I don't, I don't think it would be, be that much, but yeah, I think it, you know, it would have to be.
I gotta go where you go then. The ones I bought were that price. They're cheaper, I'll go.
Yeah, I don't know. Um, doing this on the fly here.
While Jamie's looking that up, Mr. Chairman, I just want to reiterate one thing that's been discussed most of the night, and that's the hours of operation. And the idling issue. And so it seems to me that the main issue of noise is, it sounds to me like it's the idling of trucks. And if that is the case, then the hours of operation can deal with that. If it goes beyond that, it is not your purview. It's the purview of local law enforcement.
Right. Thanks, Eric. And, and, and that goes, I guess, for J S Ray. I mean, they can't get to their lot at five o'clock or five thirty or six or even and start, you know, warming up their engines and making, making a ton of noise. Even if they have to get to work at seven, I mean, you know, they can't, they have to abide by that.
Exactly.
Hours of operations.
And the other thing I wanted to mention is that this property, 347, is the entire property. So the conditions you impose automatically apply to J S Ray and the property owner is responsible for making sure those are being met.
Right. All right. Are we, are we at a point where we can? I guess Jamie's still, are you doing your, you're doing your planting guides for the, for the arbivide, George?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, uh, of mixed mind about the, um, uh, I, I can get the idea, idea of, um, of a planting buffer. I, I think we've also all seen, um, rows of arbivides that, um, are in a site that is not, um, great for their, and, you know, they haven't, um, fared well. Um, I, I really do think the key issue for me and my main focus is about the hours of operation. Um, several people have said. And, um, within the context of the hours of operation, the overnight activity, um, between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. So that's really my main focus. I'm, I'm of mixed mind about the vegetation issue.
Yeah.
That into the mix.
Well, the, the other thing about the vegetation issue is we're not, is, is we're not experts. You know, we're not, we're not, we're not arborists, we're not landscape architects, designers. I mean, you know, it's hard to know, you know, you got, yeah, plant, you know, plant, plant four foot arbivides, you know, six feet from the, from the edge of the road. Do we know those are going to survive? How does this, you know, how does all that? How does the soil get prepared? There's, there's like, I mean, it would almost be like we gotta, you know, we, 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 we asked the applicant come before us with, with, with a designed planting screen that somebody who knows what they're doing has, has put together and, you know, is going to stand behind it and warranty the work and say, this is going to work. Uh, is something like that, would that be possible to do, Eric?
I think I understood what you said. Can you?
Well, the idea was we, we, we would, we would ask the app, we would require the applicant as a, as a condition of approval to get, to have a landscape buffer sort of planned, um, by, by somebody who will be able to specify plants that do what we want it to do and survive the conditions and soil types.
Yes, I understand what you're saying. And yes, you can definitely do that. And, um, that would be a good idea, actually. So.
We're not going to figure this out.
Uh, sorry, go ahead, Jamie.
Oh, I was just saying, I, I prefer that strategy. Uh, kicking it to, kicking it to the experts and including, you know, in the conditions that will thrive, et cetera. Um, I think we've seen in the past where we've conditioned something and the applicant hasn't done a great job keeping it alive. So it would be great to, if you know the instance I'm referring to. Um, so I, I think including that, that language, um, makes a whole lot of sense.
Right. And that way, yeah, because we don't, we don't know it's going to work there. But something will. And there's somebody who knows what it is. All right. Well, I, I would be inclined to, to include, um, in, include a, uh, a requirement for a landscape screen. Hours of operation. No idling. Uh, dust mitigation. The, the apron and the drainage swale. Is there anything else I'm missing? George?
Again, uh, my understanding of the distinction of our purview would be, um, idling outside of the hours of operation. That if there were idling happening during the hours of operation, it's not, that is something that is a law issue and law enforcement issue. Is that what you were saying, Eric, earlier?
Yes.
So that we're talking about being clear about the hours of operation, that it means no routine idling during non-operating hours. And it means no, um, uh, truck operation prior to 7:00 AM. And being. That as an expectation.
Except trucks pulling in in the middle of the night after at the end of a run, correct?
Trucks starting up before 7:00 AM. Starting up. No trucks starting, you know, starting up trucks before 7:00 AM.
Right.
So emphasizing the, the start of operations is clearly firmly limited to start at 7:00 AM. If a truck comes in later, that's, that's something else we don't have to be as specific about. Obviously, if it were to be, I, I don't know how to put a percentage on it, but I think, um, uh, Eric's point and the applicant's point, uh, you know, sometime a truck would run late or something like that. But I think we can be clear about not starting any trucks before 7:00 AM.
Okay.
As a condition.
Right.
I think we need some clarity about this.
Right. Right. And then, and then in terms of trucks idling during the day beyond whatever it takes just to warm them up, that's, that's an enforcement issue that's going to have to be dealt with. By, by virtue of the, you know, Mass General Law idling, idling regulations. Yep.
Same with the folks, if, if they're really idling, you know, all night, sleeping, that seems like a law enforcement issue. That's not something we have any purview over.
Right.
George, I'm saying that we do have say over that, because at that point, it wouldn't just be an issue of them violating the idling law. They would be not following the conditions we are setting for hours of operation.
Well, unless it's a truck coming in late at night, you know, and then, and then, and then, and then the driver sits there and idles the truck for an hour while, you know, doing, filling out a log or, you know, doing whatever work has to, you know, doing, working in the truck. That wouldn't be acceptable under, under what we're, what we're, what we're stating.
Right. Agreed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to point out additional potential condition of approval. I don't know if you saw the correspondence from the fire prevention officer.
I didn't see that.
One line, I can read it right now if you'd like me to.
Please.
Mr. Darmachov should reach out to the fire prevention office for permits related to service repair garages. In most cases, a hot works permit along with a permit to to store flammable combustible liquids would be required. An inspection is done as well for safety associated with the permitted activities. So an inspection by the fire prevention officer could be a condition of approval.
All right. That's, that seems, that seems like a, like a good thing to include. I mean, there's no, I, I mean, the building that's on site's been condemned. Is there any, is there any indoor premises? Legal premises right now that people can occupy? I'm just curious.
Is that a question for me, Mr.?
Yeah, yes, yes, please.
I, I think there's two buildings on site. There's the 325 Wall Street that's condemned, and then there's another building that they do their, their working.
Okay. All right. So yes, I think that's a, I think that's a good, a good, uh, a good thing to include in our recommendations or, or requirements. All right. Are we, are we ready to, uh, to, uh, make a motion and take a vote? Does anybody want to, want to take that one on?
Well, I think it's all the things you just said, Charles. You want to just restate them?
All right, so.
I'll kick it back to you. You just, you just said them all. They were great.
Right. All right. Well, I would, I would, I would have moved to, to grant a site plan approval for 347 Wall Street would be, you know, with the following conditions. That, uh, there is, uh, hours of operation are strictly between 7:00 AM and 10:00 at night. No vehicles can, can, can start or leave the site before 7:00 AM. And that includes idling of, of the, uh, of the tractor trailer trucks. And people using the contractors yard. There were, there will be no, no idling of the, of the tractor trailers, you know, on site. Either upon returning home after, after a trip or, or beyond the, the minimum required time to warm up the engine and the truck to leave the site. We were going to, uh, require the applicant to, to come back to the planning board within, let's say, 45 days with a, um, with, with, with a designed, uh, landscape screen buffer that will mitigate noise, dust, and survive, you know, on, on a, you know, I guess we should say it would be a, uh, uh, you know, a, a year round plan. That will, that will mitigate noise, dust, light, survive the soil conditions. And, uh, I guess it would, I guess it would extend from, from the, uh, the, the southern length of the property line to the, uh, to the J S Ray fence. We will, uh, uh, we're going to require the, uh, the, uh, conforming to the, um, DPW suggestions for the, uh, the apron and the, uh, and the drainage swale. We, 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 the, uh, we're going to, uh, also, also, uh, require the, uh, that the applicant have the fire inspector come and inspect the premises, uh, relative to, you know, consistent with, 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 with the memo received from them, from the fire department. Am I getting it all? George?
Just a, a few clarifications. Um, I know it's very complex. Um, the hours of operation part, you cited 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. That's what is the proposed hours of operation for the trucking firm.
Right.
The hours of work, the JS Ray uh site are proposed as seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Saturday.
Thank you.
I want to suggest we uh include that.
Yes.
And the other thing is I I wasn't sure that during the daytime. Hours of operation that we have the power or authority to um. Uh, address, and I'll I'll take correction from Eric if I'm wrong, um that we have the power to address along someone idols. Um, I think we can, we can, no idling outside of operation, extended idling outside of hours of operation. But during of hours of operation, I don't know that we can. You know, we have authority over that. Am I?
Well, well, I mean, the 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 idling law stipulates five minutes, right?
We're not, we're not, we're not law enforcement. I I totally agree with that, but we're not, we're not police officers. So Eric is, um, am I right about that, distinction?
Yes, you are correct.
So I don't think we should have it as a condition about how long trucks are idle during the daytime. That's addressed by a different authority. Um.
Can we just put that in there as a reminder of the law? He just referenced the law and just say FYI, this is the law.
You can reference the law. You can always do that.
Nice.
Well, so we could say, so we could say applicant will adhere to 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 Mass General Law. Um.
I I think.
Ninety-six and sixteen A.
Right, rel- relative to um extended idling or relative to idling on premises.
Yeah, I I don't know. Again, I don't know if we can say will adhere, but um I I um, you know, I don't know if it's should be cognizant of or something, but um.
Maybe we just say, maybe we just say, you know, I do, I don't idling laws um are 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 defined by.
Yes, yes. That sounds good. I just don't want to overstep.
No, I hear you. That's good. So that does that capture everything?
Um, there's a couple other ones, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
The applicant shall adhere to the truck routes as presented in the application.
Yes. Yeah.
Did you mention the dust mitigation?
Uh, I just, I I I I. Not not specifically, I just, yeah, only only relative to the plants, to the planting screen. So yeah, the dust mitigation. Um. Then I don't, I don't know if we have to, if we have to define the means and methods of that other than to. Note it.
What those truck routes are.
Wait, no, I I I was talking about the dust mitigation.
Oh, the dust mitigation, okay.
We might want to specify what we mean by that. Um, I don't know if there's best practices that can be referenced. Or if we want to, if it's a just a particular issue in the summer when there's drought, um, you know, speaking to what we expect of the applicant.
Periodic watering of watering down of 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 material during hot, dry weather.
You could just say the applicant shall. Implement dust mitigation in in dry weather.
Yep, yep, that does it.
Okay.
The other um area, uh, Charles, is about the the parking Eric had cited in his memo. Um, we hadn't touched on that at all.
Right, so it's so there needs to be nine delineated parking spaces, dedicated parking spaces to accommodate both JS Ray. And and the trucking company. And, you know, it's, I don't know how they're going to do that other than, you know, um. They can't stripe it because it's a, it's a, it's a gravel area. I guess they could, they could do it with signage perhaps. Um. What do you think, Eric? I mean, it's a big, it's a big open lot. There's probably room to park cars. Do we need a, do we need to designate a specific, a specific? Location for parking?
My thoughts were that after hearing the application and the presentation of the project, that the truck drivers really don't park there and the JS Ray folks parked within the fence area. You could require marked nine off-street parking spaces clearly marked.
Yeah, let's just, let's, let's, let's do that. So we're gonna, we're gonna say nine, nine off-street parking spaces will be, will be delineated. Leave it at that. That sound okay? Um.
One other thing, Charles, related to the vegetation. You were referring to it being on the um. Um. The portion of the um plot that was for the trucking. Um, company trucking. Um.
Yeah.
And and I just want to point out that the uh the fence um is is there in the state is now without um ZBA approval. I don't want to presume what the ZBA would decide. Um, so I don't know if um. We need to take that into consideration at all.
You mean in case the ZBA decides that they they're going to make them take down the fence?
I don't know what will happen with that.
Right. Well, we, well, what, well, we could say that, you know, that it is, as long as the fencing is, as long as the JS Ray fencing is in place, the the landscaping can stop there.
Okay.
And if the fencing comes down, the landscaping needs to be extended.
Yep.
Okay. Does that capture it? So Eric, do you want to read those back to us? Please?
I don't have exact wording, Mr. Chairman. I was going to piece this together after in the morning, after looking at my notes. But I I will have, by my notes, I think I can get pretty precise, good language that you can review tomorrow.
Okay.
I mean, I can tell you generally what you said, but word to word, I can't do that right now.
Yeah, if you guys, if you guys hit the high points.
Yeah, I can do that. So the conditions of approval are as follows. The applicant shall follow all recommendations of the DPW's review memo dated November sixteenth, twenty twenty, which requires a grass swale and a asphalt apron to protect the street. Trucks entering and exiting the site shall use the truck routes presented in the application. Well, there is one other one on this this that we have not mentioned yet. The applicant shall remove or register all unregistered vehicles on the property in excess of one.
Yes.
Right, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see. The applicant shall implement dust mitigation in dry weather. The hours of operation shall be as follows for the trucking firm, seven AM to seven PM. No vehicles can start or idle prior to seven AM. The hours of operation for JS Ray shall be seven AM to seven PM. And that thing I just read applies to them as well. The applicant shall contact the fire prevention officer for an inspection of the property.
Eric, just one correction if I could.
Okay.
For the truck firm, I think we were talking about the the proposed um hours of operation of seven AM to ten PM.
And that's what I said.
Okay, well, I thought you said seven, so sorry about that.
No, JS Ray would be seven, yep. JS Ray, seven to seven, and seven to ten for the trucking firm.
And they're slightly different on the days.
Monday through Saturday for JS Ray. And Monday through seven days a week for the trucking firm.
Right.
Okay, and uh can I continue, Mr. Chairman?
Please. Yes, please.
Sorry.
I will reference Mass General Law, Chapter ninety-six and sixteen A, as the idling law for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The applicant shall. Prepare a designed plan for. Screened, for a screened landscaped buffer that shall extend along Well Street to the existing JS Ray fencing. Unless the fencing is removed, it shall extend to the length of the property.
Okay. And and I think I would, I would like to add that the landscaping should be designed to be, um, you know, a a acoustic and light blocking and dust blocking and uh. Um, uh, and and hopefully ever and evergreen, so it's, it it functions year round.
Okay, I'll definitely add the word evergreen because that was not in there. And I did have this other stuff that I didn't read, and it's right, that will mitigate dust, noise, and light.
Okay, thank you.
Can you just add, because it's what we discussed before, that it would be a, you know, a plan with a professional?
I I put landscape architect, but it could be an arborist. Would he add a couple of people like landscape architect or an arborist?
An arborist, yeah.
Arborist, yes.
Or arborist.
Or Eric, it could be, it could be designed build by, you know, a a a competent landscaper too.
Okay, I'll put all three.
Yeah, just listing experts.
George? George?
You're muted.
Thank you. Um, back over the hours of operation and days of operation. Um, I know we hadn't, um, obviously, um, JS Ray, the proposal suggests that um it would not operate on Sundays. Um, did we want to confer with the applicant about the idea of um not having the trucking firm operate on Sundays as well? And whether that would be as far as his. And as a business?
Um, we we could ask the question. Um. Eugene?
Like I said before. I mean, Sunday during the day, if I have to go somewhere. I don't think you can make me not be able to do that. I don't know.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe.
Okay, all right, are we? So Eric, is that, are we at the end of our of our conditions? Order of.
Yes.
Okay. So I've I've made the motion. Do I have a second?
Or do you just second?
Did George get in there? Okay, thank you, George. Any further discussion?
Charles, one small piece. I I believe you've got Jim here as well, but I I have not been like voted in by you guys to actually serve as a voting member. So and I'm happy to not vote on it, but I just, I'm going to stay silent, I guess, unless you guys kind of elevate me.
All right, Jim, are you, are you here? We haven't, we, sorry, we haven't heard from you. I didn't, um.
He might be unable to, he may be unable to unmute himself.
Jim, oh, Eric, you may have to unmute Jim.
Okay, let me see if I can do that. I'm just going to unmute all for a second so Jim can talk.
Okay.
Jim, can you hear us?
He's still muted, it looks like.
All right, I should be unmuted.
Oh.
Oh, it's good to hear your voice, Jim.
It's.
Well.
I forgot about you, sorry.
I'm sorry if you were muted all this time. Gosh, that's that's.
Sorry, I always try to speak four or five times, whatever.
Okay, well, good. I know you, I know you you usually have a lot to say, so um, but we're we're discussing the motions, so. We're 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 discussing the motions, so you you you.
Right.
You, if you have anything you'd like to add, we'd love to hear you from you.
No, I I I just think that uh is, I think the whole thing boils down to um the local residences in the area. I have stood by while somebody moved in and maybe the time to do something was six months ago. Um, maybe we should have. Found a way to open this up to everybody um six, eight, ten months ago, whatever, so that everybody could have a a. An equal speak into this. I don't know.
Yeah. Well, that that's part of the unfortunate si- situation, man, is that, you know, the, is that this, this was, this is, this kind of is sort of a retroactive.
Right, I know, I understand. It's been going on for a considerable length of time and at different uh. Rates or whatever, the fences were put up and they shouldn't have, and the signs were put up and they probably shouldn't have, and we're talking about putting swales up now. And now and and we're talking, talking about uh arborities and things like that. Maybe if we'd all started at the beginning, uh, it would have been much smoother and the end result may have been better.
Yeah. Thank you. Well, I mean, I think, I think these are, I think these are issues, yeah, who knows? These, these are issues that could have come up. Either way, it's just, um. But yes, that's a good thought. Thank you for that. Um. No, um, so, all right. Um, so we've, we've, we've made them, made our motion. We've discussed, George?
Uh, Mark had the question of whether you were elevating him to voting position.
Um. Okay, can I, can I, can I do that at this point, Eric, retroactive to the beginning of the meeting? Eric?
Sorry, I was muted. Uh, since he's participated in the entire discussion, yes, you can do that.
Okay, Mark, I'm gonna, I'm just, I'm gonna elevate you because you you to a voting position. You had a lot of good input. And uh and a valued member of of the deliberation, so. Right. I'm I'm I'm. Hereby elevating you. Okay, so. All in favor of of granting site plan approval to three forty-seven Wall Street based on the uh the the motions that Eric just recited and the ensuing discussion?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you. Find my agenda here. All right, we're moving on to ZBA recommendations. Um, we have a, the first ZBA recommendation, or the only ZBA recommendation. Is uh is application of Shaft Current Solutions Incorporated for property located at fourteen Hope Street, assessors map fifty-one lot five. I'm hearing, I'm hearing an echo.
Me too.
Located um. In the Central Commercial District zoning.
You have to unmute yourself, Mr. Chairman, now. I muted everybody.
All right.
Thanks, Eric. Okay, so I will continue now. Um, yeah, I was just getting a distracting echo because somebody's feedback. Application of Shaft Current Solutions Incorporated for property located at fourteen Hope Street, assessors map fifty-one lot five, which is located in the Central Commercial. DC zoning district for special permit pursuant to sections two hundred four point one, D four, two hundred eight point three, and two hundred eight point four, the zoning ordinance. In order to allow a small machine shop in the basement level of the building for the purpose of of testing and conducting quality assurance on grounding brushes. Um, for sale and making the components used to attach the brushes on various machines at this location. In addition, the applicants used to the premises would. Uh, include business and professional offices on the first and second floor of the building, and the continued use of approximately forty-seven ninety square feet of building for printing and publishing. Um, is the applicant here to uh to present the project?
Here I'll be, I'll be back with Hernandez, who is uh the president of Shaft.
All right, great. And what's your, and what's your address for the record?
Of Shaft Current Solutions. Of Shaft Current Solutions?
Um, just your address, I guess. Yeah. Yeah.
So the business address is 34 North Maple Street, Florence, Massachusetts.
Yeah, thank you. Isaac, do you want to continue?
Isaac, do you want to continue? Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so, um, Shaft Current Solutions is going to be, they intend to move their, uh, their headquarters to 14 Hope Street. Um, they would be primarily located in the basement of the building. Um, and the majority of, uh, of their space would be taken up with their, uh, the professional offices where they they do sales and sold work. Everything's in the, um, description on the docket. Um, they're going to be assembling and appropriating and machines shop. With a use not otherwise specified and, uh, that's that's a lot. Okay. Rest.
Um, Isaac, hang on, hang on a second. You're coming in really spotty. Is George, is that what you were gonna comment on?
Yeah. If you turn off the video, might help.
How how's that? Can you hear me better now?
Much better.
Much better. Oh, great. Okay. Um, so the 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 first and second floor right now, um, of 14 Hope Street, uh, are are occupied by by the Greenfield Recorder. Um, the description in the docket mentioned, uh, printing and publishing. Uh, they don't do any actual printing there now. It's it's just professional office space. Um, they would they would remain there, uh, as a tenant, probably, um, a little bit scaled back in their space. Um, and the the long term plan, uh, would be to bring in other, uh, other professional office tenants, uh, into the space. Um, the site plan that we submitted as part of the application shows a kind of a three-phase renovation of the site and the building. Uh, but before I I dive into that, I thought I would have, uh, Rui Fernandez, uh, describe the nature of the business and and really just what a grounding brush actually is, uh, because it's it's a little bit beyond me. So, uh, I'll have Rui present that part.
Hi, uh, this is, uh, Rui Fernandez. If you can hear me. Um, so we're I'm actually, I have an echo, so some access a microphone if you can unmute it. Okay, so, um, anyway, uh, we we produce shaft grounding brushes. Uh, these are brushes that protect, uh, really large scale machinery from, um, uh, power generation, petrochem facilities, uh, large naval ships, cruise ships. Um, any machine that has a large rotating component has a potential for creating, uh, accumulating electrical charges in the rotating part. And then those charges discharge through sparking and those sparks limit the effective, uh, operational life of these machines. And some of these machines, like a nuclear power plant, for example, or any power plant, they like to run for for many years on end. Uh, and they don't want to stop. And so we over the last 40 years have developed kind of the high end of shaft grounding brushes. We we produce uh, brushes that go on the most critical machines in plants, uh, and in operations throughout the world. Um, these machine, these parts are relatively small, so this is, um, a box for one of them. And, um, this is, um, a grounding brush. This is the holder for the brush. And then on the brush, we have, um, really kind of the the critical component, which is the actual, excuse me, brush itself, which is made out of a material that we've developed over quite a few years, which is kind of the secret sauce, so to speak, which are these brushes. So they're primarily made out of, um, gold and silver, so they're really expensive. Um, and so kind of like the Rolex of this, we are the 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 last resort that a lot of organizations come to when they can't keep their machines running. Um, so we manufacture, uh, these, um, and so what we do is we assemble them, we make certain components for them. Uh, a lot of stuff we order from specialty shops. Um, and we export these, um, throughout the world. A lot of our work has to do with consulting with the people that we help to make sure that they understand how to install, how to operate and how to protect their machines. Um, the operations required to make one of these are, um, we have, uh, milling machines, there's some welding, um, there's a lot of hand labor involved in these because there's a lot of detail fitting of parts. Um, and then packaging and then we ship them. Um, we are a a small volume, high, uh, value item. I mean, we sell a few hundred brushes a year of these full assemblies and then we sell a few thousand of these a year. Uh, there aren't that many machines. I mean, the smallest machines that our brushes go on are 4,000 horsepower. So that is the smallest thing and we go to machines that have over 2 million horsepower. So there aren't too many of these, but that's kind of what we do. And our our goal, when we looked at this space, was that it it was a perfect fit for us. It it allows us to have our research and development and consulting space right next to where we have the milling machines, where we have all those, because we're very hands-on with our, um, operations. And that's all I have. That's all I have.
Thanks, Rui. Um, do 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 all of the, uh, board members have copies of the site plan accessible?
We do. Um, I'm gonna bring it up on the screen.
Um, I don't, hold on.
There's actually a share button. I I I can do it, actually, I think. Let me see. Can anybody see that? Do I have to turn on my video?
No, that's great. Thanks. I can see it.
Thanks, I can see it. Great. Okay, so I'm gonna just skip ahead to, uh, ups to A 1.0, um, because this this is the, um, this is the basement plans where Shaft Current Solutions operations would be located. Um, and it's gonna be, as you can see, uh, we've got office area, R and D, uh, um, quality assurance. That is almost all going to fall into that, um, that professional office category, which is, uh, which is a use that's allowed as of right in the Central Commercial District. It's really this, uh, this blue square fabricating and machining. Um, that is, you know, what Rui was just describing. It's that it's that machine shop that, uh, that is the, um, use not otherwise, uh, defined or not use not elsewhere classified. Um, it's, uh, this is actually where the Greenfield Recorder used to do, uh, pretty substantial, uh, printing and publishing. So it it doesn't require really any retrofitting to put in, uh, this machine shop. In fact, it's it's equipped for, you know, a much more substantial operation than what Shaft Current Solutions will will actually be doing. Um, as I mentioned, the long term plan is a is a three-phase, uh, development and it would take place over about, uh, four to five years. Um, or three to four years. So, um, the main, there there's really not a a lot of change happening, um, to the interior of the building. Um, it's going, the the big, the big change on the site is going to be, uh, can you see my cursor when I move it? I'm I'm gonna I'm gonna point you. Oh, great. Okay, so so the main change is going to be, um, building C over here, um, which is, uh, you know, this, this is a a three-story wood frame building, uh, as opposed to the other two or two-story, um, brick and mortar. This this one, uh, building C, the plan is to demolish it in phase one and then, uh, replace it. Uh, replace it with a grass lawn, um, that will be, uh, fenced in and accessible for, uh, employees that work in these buildings. Um, in fa- in the in, uh, phase through in phase three, um, if there is sufficient market demand for it, the plan is to build a new building on the same footprint as building three, um, for, uh, for more, um, professional office space. So it would not be office space for Shaft Current Solutions. It it would be leased out to, uh, you know, to local businesses and professionals. Um, if there was sufficient market demand. Um, the the otherwise, there's not, um, there's not going to be a ton of changes to the site. There are two parking existing lot three right here, uh, will be, they're gonna they're gonna put this green patio into it, um, in phase one. And then in phase two, the other lot is going to get a green patio as well. I think this is it. Yeah, right here. So in phase two, the other lot would get this green patio. Um, in during phase one, there will be a, uh, handicap accessible ramp, um, prints, but, uh, in phase two, the plan is to, uh, is to make this the this, uh, front entrance, the main entrance that will be, uh, handicap accessible. And in phase three, it will it will include, uh, a lift as well. Um, otherwise, the, uh, the site work mostly just consists with, uh, consists of general repairs, adding in lighting to bring it up to code, um, adding adding in, uh, accessible, um, parking spaces. Um, and, uh, in internally, it's going to be, it's going to be a similar amount of just bringing things up to code. Um, new lighting and accessibility features for lockers and bathrooms. Uh, there will be, um, uh, there will be some additional interior walls to, uh, to suit the office tenants. Um, and just and just sort of general repairs and upgrades, um, again, to 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 bring everything up to code. Um, so the the footprint of the building, uh, is not going to be growing at all. In fact, it's going to be, uh, substantially reduced if building three isn't built. And then even if if they do end up rebuilding building three, it's it's still a slightly smaller footprint than the existing footprint now. Um, it would obviously bring in, uh, lots more business, not only because of Shaft Current Solutions. Uh, also because of the upgrades that allow it to be, um, used as a, uh, a a center for, uh, for local businesses and professionals. Um, it will, uh, we're gonna have it um, because the site is integrated with this additional lot here that has, uh, 44 spaces on it. And 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 that's really going to be the primary parking for the site. Um, by developing it in this, with this multi-phase system, uh, the businesses, the abutting businesses, but also even the businesses on site to continue operating, uh, throughout the process. Um, it, uh, it's it's all of the abutting properties are also, uh, zoned Central Commercial District. Um, and, uh, it's it's well suited to the neighborhood, um, and it'll it'll fit in well with the environment. Um, so we're asking, uh, we're asking for you to recommend, uh, special permit for the use, uh, not otherwise, uh, classified and, uh, approval of the site plan as well.
Thanks, Isaac.
Sure.
Um, so I'm I'm still getting, okay, I guess I I was getting an echo, but now it's gone. That's reassuring. Thank you. Um, so this the on the plan I'm looking at right now that you have up on the screen that I just I'm just trying to get oriented here. So that that garden off to the off to the south is that's it. That's at Hope Street level. And then the main entry into the building is over to the right. Is that right? It doesn't really look like it. I'm guessing it is.
Yes.
Okay. And then that area up above it where it says building B footprint, are we actually seeing the lower level of that building there as opposed to the same the same level as?
This is, uh, this is the this general site layout and we're at, we're in phase two right now. Um, and, uh, then each, so this this is the basement layout.
Right.
This is the first floor.
Right, okay. Okay.
And this is the second floor, once it resolves.
All right, so that plan you were showing was kind of like a it was it was the upper level on the parking lot side, the upper level on the on the Hope Street side, to sort of describe the site. Is that right?
Yeah, yeah, that's it's just showing, that's just showing the building's footprint. And then this is because this is really to try to show the layout of the site, not the buildings themselves.
Right. And so building C, which is the old original Gazette office, um, that's gonna be a a garden area for now? You can tear that building down and now in phase one?
Yes, uh, and and potentially, uh, rebuild or leave it as a garden depending on market demand. If you go up to, uh, this is A 0.1, I I think this kind of lays out the, um, the three-phase procedure pretty well. Uh, the top, the top, uh, row is the existing buildings and then each each column is a floor. So the column to the right is basement, then first floor and then second floor. Um, so so you can see, it doesn't show, it doesn't show the site beyond besides the buildings. This is really just showing the, uh, the building layout, but you but you can see how they change, uh, from existing to phase one, two, and then three.
Okay. So that so buildings, building three, the old the old Gazette building, that's just that's just no longer uh, 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 it, it's, it's, it's a sinking ship. In terms of trying to maintain it.
This is really.
Yeah, actually, I'll, I'll really answer that.
Okay.
Uh, uh, I, I've hired a couple of different uh folks who are specializing in this. And um, it, the building is beyond repair. I mean, economically, uh, the, the, the roof structure is collapsing. Um, there's substantial water damage uh throughout the main structure of the building. And it's not economical to, to repair.
Yeah, I believe it. I don't, I don't, this, this is not relevant. That was where the Old World Eye Bookstore used to be, back in the, back in the old days, in that building.
We, you, you know, a- a- as a business person, uh, you'd never typically suggest that you gotta demolish seven thousand square feet of potential office space. Unless you have really good reason for it, uh, just don't throw that kind of stuff away.
Yeah, no, I, I can, I, I can believe it. And then, uh, and so you're, you're gonna apply for a, a demo permit for that, I suppose, and then get, get mo- move on with um the building permits for Phase One and Phase Two. And for, for Phase Three, um, which is the construction, potential construction of, of the new building. I guess that'll be, um, we'll, we'll, we'll get a chance to see that one when it comes around.
Right.
Any comments from the board?
George has a, George has a question, Mr. German.
Uh, yeah, thanks, George. Um, I'm trying to, trying to get my uh, get my grid view back here.
So um, I had a couple of questions. One is about the um, uh, function of the um, uh, the non-office uh business, the business in the basement. Um, cause I see from the project narrative, it talks about testing and conducting quality assurance on these. Um, so I, I wasn't clear if this is a um manufacturing process or if there's a manufacturing primarily uh at another site. And this is a testing of those components, those just components, those just, little unclear on that, little unclear on that.
I, I can answer that. So.
Answer that, so.
We are primarily at this stage, uh, company that uh outsources all our machines processes. All right, Keith, is this better? Um, so, so we are primarily, uh, we assemble and test, and manufacture. I think there's an echo, there's an echo.
Do, do, I don't know, that seems to come from you, Rory. I don't know if you have a, have a phone and a computer on or what's happening.
I don't. All right, anyway, so a- at this stage, we, we primarily assemble and test in-house. Um, but we're, we're having issues with, with quality and timeline um predictability. So uh, we have started, we have bought several milling machines, we've hired staff. And we hope to continue to, to go in that direction. So our, our plan is all the components of this will be made onsite or majority of them.
Thank you. Uh, the other question I had was related to the uh site plan. I, I um, looking at the um, the um, um, the, the plans that uh, that uh, um, Isaac displayed and also reading the uh narrative, I see about the addition of some green space and uh patios and seating. And um, and I wondered about uh if, I, I couldn't tell from the plans I have just because of the scale, if there's any bicycle parking included in the proposal?
Um, I mean, I didn't even think about it. We, we ride bicycles a lot and we have bicycles in, in, in the building. So, uh, yeah, that's kind of a given for us.
Cause it, it seemed to me that hopefully the patio area in the back of the building plus the um, air phase um, green space uh nearer Hope Street would both be good locations for bicycle parking.
Yeah, I agree.
Thanks.
Charles are muted. Thank you. And I have to remember what I said. I said, oh, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm encouraged to see something happening, you know, in the recorder building because I wasn't sure what was gonna happen with that space as, as the recorder's business model changes. And so, um, you know, it, it, it seems like a good fit. There's, there's a great sort of parking and loading dock area, you know, to the uh, you know, off, off the back of the building. That seems well-suited to your purposes. Um, I'm sorry that, that we're gonna lose that uh, that old wood frame building, but I understand that at a certain point, you go, you go beyond the point of no return with those structures. And uh, so I think it's, I think it's a, I think it's a good, a good, a good fit. Um, those are, those are my thoughts. Anyone else? Sure to weigh in here?
General question about like noise of the machinery. Is it particularly loud to operate?
I think the air conditioning machines are louder, our milling machines. Uh, we, we sit next to our, I mean, if you look behind me, can't see it, but they're, they run behind us, behind our o- office space, so.
Yeah, yeah. Probably can't be louder than a printing press.
Yeah, they, they have three hundred horsepower printing presses running in that basement. Uh, uh, most powerful machine is three horsepower.
Do they have their brushes on there?
They didn't, but a lot of printing presses did.
All right. Um, George?
Yeah, I would be ready to uh make a motion to forward a positive recommendation with a suggesting of adding bicycle parking to the plan.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jim, are you, I think you might be muted. Can you unmute? Okay, oh, good. We got you. All right, um, that's it. You have our, you have a positive recommendation for the ZBA. Good luck with them. This was a good dry run for you and, for you and good luck with it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, how's everybody doing? Does anybody need a five-minute break?
Yeah.
I, I would love a chance to just get up and strap, walk around for a minute. Yeah.
All right, all right, we're gonna, we're gonna take a five-minute recess at nine oh one. We convene at nine oh six.
Charles?
Yep.
Charles?
Yes, Eric.
Uh, who seconded that motion? I didn't catch that.
Mark. It was me, Eric.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right. See y'all in a couple minutes.
All right. All right, are we, are we all back? Jim, are you here?
I think he needs to be unmuted.
Yeah.
I'm here now.
Oh, excellent. Great. Eric, you're here?
I'm here.
Good, let's, let's move on. Yes.
Hello.
Um, yeah, so now we're moving on to these, uh, these, uh, recommendations. Um, on, on three zoning issues here, um, pick them on in order. Um, the first is the, is, is our deliberation on the, um, uh, rural residential district RC two hundred four point one point three, which is to, um, allow, um, uh, cultivation within the RC district, lifting the cap from five thousand square feet to what they're applying for, which is actually a tier eleven, uh, allowance, which is a hundred thousand square feet. Um, George?
This, I was thinking about this too. That's what, um, Lee was saying they were wanting to do. But my understanding is are the both zoning change would remove the cap altogether. There would be no cap at all. And I was wondering what the highest tier is. I don't know if that's eleven.
Well, Eric did a little research on this for us.
Okay. But I understood we weren't, it wasn't raising it to tier eleven. It was just eliminating the cap, is my understanding.
Yeah, your understanding is correct, George. It'd just be eliminating it. So there's no cap. And, uh, tier eleven is the highest tier of all from ninety thousand to a hundred thousand square feet of canopy.
I just gotta say, is this like Spinal Tap? Sorry, I have to say.
Yeah. So, I mean, so it, it, it opens the door for up to a hundred thousand square foot cultivation facility in the, in the, in the RC district. Um, and, uh, I guess, you know, I, I, we, I thought, I thought that the, uh, the, the, the folks who put the, uh, the zoning initiative, who, who, who are asking for this, uh, this change in the zoning, have a, have a good business plan. I think it, I think it, I think it really fits for that site. Um, it's right next to the highway. It's also a very different kind of a site from everything else that we think of as RC. I mean, I mean, this site is very different than, than a lot of the land, you know, you, when you think about, you know, classic greenfield farmland out in the meadows or, you know, or, or those, or those sorts of areas. And, and it's, 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 so it's, it's weird that it's in the RC zone, but so different than everything else and appropriate for this site, but wouldn't necessarily be appropriate for another site that's in that, in that zone. Um, I think, I think, I think that's where I'm getting, that that's where I'm sort of going with this a little bit. And Eric, I was wondering if, um, you know, it is, it's, it's, it's one lot away from, uh, uh, the, the general commercial, uh, the general commercial district. It's just one lot away. I mean, wouldn't it be, isn't it possible you could rezone this, that rezone this piece of property and the two lots intervening between this piece of property and, and, and the, the, the general commercial on the other side of the highway and just, and without it being spot zoning because you're absorbing it into another, to an adjacent zone?
You know, that could be done without, without it being spot zoning. Yes. And actually I brought this up to them. And I gave them two options when they came to Greenfield. I said, you could rezone the general commercial or you could do this route. They chose this route.
Is this, is, is there less sort of, um, bureaucracy or is there less red tape, less process with this zone, with this process as opposed to rezoning?
Yes, the rezoning would have took, uh, a much longer timeframe, which is why I think they went this route.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I just worry about, I, I, I worry about the unintended consequences of, of opening up all the RC land, you know, to, up to buildings that could be, you know, house a hundred, hundred square feet of canopy. You know, they don't have to be tiered. There's nothing that says it has to be tiered. You know, you could build a hundred square foot building, um, which is big. I mean, just to sort of give a, I, I, you know, I always try and compare one thing to other. I know Mark, you know, good with his stuff, but, um, I try, I try to compare sizes of things. But, you know, uh, for instance, like the former Strider School barn, if anybody's familiar with that building, that's, that, that building has a ten thousand square foot footprint. So a hundred thousand square feet would be ten of those barns. George?
I just, thanks. I just wondered if, um, Eric could walk us through what is the procedure and top stuff for the rezoning option?
The rezoning option would have, uh, they went strictly with an application to city council. Uh, there's different ways to initiate zone amendments and zoning map changes. So they chose the quickest route, which is a direct application to city council for a zone change. And the planning board just needs to provide a recommendation, what you're doing now. And then this council votes on it. The, the other process is, is, well, it would have been about the same timeframe. I don't, I'm not really sure. Yeah, the map thing would have been the same. Would have been the same, but would have took a little longer because it would have gone through the planning board. And they would have worked with the planning board for the zoning map change. It wouldn't have just done it without working with the board. And that's what would be extended time would have been.
Right. I mean, what's your, is your, is your sense that a zoning change like, like this would would stand a pretty good chance of going through?
The current proposal, the current proposal?
No, a, a zone change, in other, in other words, changing it, changing the, uh, changing this, letting, letting this lot become absorbed into the, into this, uh, the general commercial zone.
I think the, the board can make a good argument that it's a logical extension of the GC zone in that area.
Right. It's gonna, it's gonna, it's going to, uh, you know, have an impact on their timeline.
Yes, it would have an impact on their timeline. Uh, but if this board would provide a negative recommendation, let's just say, uh, the city council probably would, would take that into consideration greatly and then make their decision. And then they would have to start over. Then they wouldn't be able to come back for this for two years and, but they could do the math change. And they just extended their time for quite a bit by, by that. But yes, they are in a, they have a plan and a timeline that they wish to get this done. And the property owner is, is along with that timeframe, he's wants to retire, wants to sell his property. So I don't know if the extension of time would have any impact on whether they come there or not.
Yeah. Well, so, I mean, I think it's, I think, so just, I don't know if I was, Eric, I had a conversation with Eric this day about the process of this. And just so the rest of the board is kind of, you know, knows that this, this zone change originated with, with, with the folks who want to open up this business. They wrote the zone, they wrote the, uh, the, the, the new initiative and then, and then petitioned the, the, the city council to initiate it and, and, and set it off on its process. And seems like it would have been, it would have been nice if in, if in their, you know, writing of a, of a, of a, of a zoning initiative, they would have consulted with the planning board ahead of time to get our, our input and feedback on something like this. Because there are, there are other, there are other, there are other ways we could have dealt with it also. I mean, for instance, one idea I had was that, was that, yeah, sure, you could put a cultivation facility in, in, in the RC, but you can't, you, you can't, you, you can only do it within the, within the footprint of an existing building. So if somebody had a barn that they wanted to take down and turn to a cultivation facility, you could do that, but you're not building on, you're not building on arable land. That would be what, that's like one thought I had. Yes, George?
Yeah, it's honest creative. Uh, I wondered, Eric, if that's a, um, uh, one, if that would be a reasonable change to, um, the zoning ordinance. And, um, two, if it is reasonable, could this current, um, request be, um, either voted down or moved and then they come back with that since it's significantly different than the, uh, current proposal?
Are you referring to what Charles just talked about with the existing footprints of barns?
Right.
Okay, yes, uh, that, well, you know, that's a good, yes, ten attorneys, you probably get ten different answers, but I would say yes, that it would be substantially different.
Yeah. And then, and then, and Eric, you had an interesting sort of take on that, which is that, which is that, you know, not, not all landowners have barns of equal size that they might want to take down and, and, and then, you know, extract the wealth of their property through cultivation, you know? So it's not, it's not, it's not a, it's not an equal opportunity option for everybody in the RC district. My, yes, yes, George.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, um, prematurely make a motion. If other people had more discussion, we can obviously discuss after a motion. But my inclination, I, I really was part of my hesitation about, um, both because it was not on the, um, mentioned on the agenda about deliberation last time, but also it was this unintended consequence issue that worried me. Um, and you look at the zoning map and say, boy, that's a lot of town and, um, that this would affect. And it's, it seems very, you know, specific to this one site where this is so appropriate. And, um, so I'd want to, um, my inclination would be to send a negative recommendation with the suggestion of doing the, um, the rezoning to, um, to incorporate it into the, uh, what is it out there? The, uh,
General Commercial.
General Commercial. Uh, that would be, that would be my inclination. And I'm, I'm sorry for the, um, the timeline, but we're, our job is to look at, you know, the long, you know, uh, span of time and potential future impacts of any zoning change. And it seems like the potential downside, uh, could be worse than, um, you know, you look at the master plan about protecting open space and, you know, that, that principle. And it just seems like it would be an unfortunate inconvenience, but I would hope it wouldn't, uh, cost their, their plans to go through that other route.
Mark?
Thanks, Charles. Can I just ask a, a clarifying question? I, is the concern then just an issue of precedent? I mean, if we're talking of special permit, and this, I think this is almost kind of like harkens back to the Wall Street discussion of like, if, are we concerned that if we do this one thing now, that that means we're obligated to do it for any other requestor in the future? Is that the concern? And let me frame this a little bit larger because I guess my question would also be like, could we do this just to allow them to stay within their timeline and institute a zoning change as well? So that the special permit is really just allowing them to kind of develop on their timeline, but you're still looking at trying to absorb those parcels? And it's the very proximity to that zone that justified the granting of a special permit, but to then just change the zoning a little bit? Does it, does it have to be one or the other? Or could it be both?
It sounds like, it's, you, it sounds like you would have to, that would be a convoluted process. Uh, you'd have to, you'd have to approve, approve the, 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 the change in the RC zone to allow this use. And then, and then you would have to parallel, um, track changing the zone. Then you would have to change the RC zone to not allow the use and then re-permit the project in, in the general commercial zoning district. It sounds complicated.
No, my apologies. My, it's, you know what? It's been a very long day and I was, I was thinking of this in terms of special permit and not in terms of actual like use table changes to the ordinance. My apologies. It's, it's nine twenty. I've, I've been going for a while.
And we got a ways to go, so.
Yeah, you're right. That's completely convoluted. I retract the entire thing.
Okay. I do. Um, well, I mean, I think, you know, I, I, I was, I think I was on the board when we, when, when we, when we went through this, um, and, and we wrote the bylaw. And then there's, there's a reason why we capped, we capped it at five thousand feet in the, in the, in the RC district. And to just suddenly raise it to a hundred thousand square feet to accommodate a business, which is going on a piece of property, which happens to be zoned RC, but which has nothing in common with ninety nine point nine percent of the RC district, just doesn't seem like the right pathway. Especially if there's another viable option.
Yep.
George?
So I guess I'll go ahead in the interest of time, if there's no other, um, you know, uh, significant different perspectives being offered to, uh, make a motion to forward a recommendation with the suggestion that the applicant, um, uh, it would be applicant would have to initiate that, Eric, about the zoning change or could the?
We could do it.
You, we could do it as well. Um, but it would probably come from the applicant who wants to utilize that property.
Okay.
But it could be done by the board. It could be done by the board.
I'm sorry, say again?
It could definitely be done by the board.
So, um, with, uh, I would say forward a negative recommendation with support for, um, their utilizing that site being, uh, worked out through incorporating into the nearby, um, what is it? What'd you say? General?
Commercial, right?
Whole district. That's my motion, if that's clear.
I would second that.
Um, any, uh, any further discussion? Is, is it, is it worth, is it worth saying that, that the board supports the business plan of, of, of these, of these folks?
I think that's incorporated in my motion.
Is it? Okay.
And what I have here is that you're moving to forward a negative recommendation with support for a zoning map change to G, general commercial.
Right.
And Eric, you probably included this in, in like the minutes that part of this discussion and why we're doing it. You know, it's, we, we are in support of what they're doing, but we don't think a universal change makes sense for the whole Sea Greenfield.
Exactly.
The whole, the whole district, yeah. Zone. Yep.
Okay, um, so we've, we've moved, we seconded, we've discussed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Jim?
Yep, aye.
Okay, thank you. Next up is the floodplain district. Modifying the floodplain, uh, district zoning, so we, so we are consistent with, with, uh, with, with federal, um, regulations. And we've, um, Eric, is there anything more we need to know about this?
Uh, not, you know, from the last time, it's just, these are required changes for the city to be in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program.
Right. George?
I would, uh, move to forward a positive recommendation.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, intentions? Good. So we'll forward a positive recommendation on that to city council. Um, now comes the low impact development. Um, we, we had some great, uh, uh, input on this from the, uh, from, from Greenfield's tree committee. And I see that we have some members of the tree committee here. Um, and you had some helpful comments and suggestions, uh, last time. Do you have, does, does anybody from the, from the tree committee have, um, words they'd like to say, uh, in, in support of this or of their, of the letter that you submitted, um, last month before we discuss?
And nothing further other than I hope you accept our friendly amendments and, uh, move and accept the low impact development amendments in general.
Okay, thanks, Margot. Yeah, I mean, I think that, um, that, 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 that all your amendments made sense. It's, it's just sort of being, they're, they're a little more specific and, um, uh, I think they sort of fill in any areas of gray that were in the, that were, that were in the low impact element area. And also using consistent language, I think. Ways of measuring tree calipers and issues like that. So I would, I would, I, I think we should, I think I, I would be in favor of incorporating the, uh, those amendments into the, in, into the ordinance.
The motion or?
George has his. That was just a comment. I'm like, George is raising his hand.
Well, I just haven't gone through these, um, the last one, um, uh, which is the eighth one that they presented. So that's on page three, uh, number two C, the last sentence, uh, preservation of existing trees, it says now is to, and they're suggesting must be prioritized. And I, I just want to point out that is, that would be a change to existing language. That's not a proposal to alter the proposed changes. All the other recommendations, um, well, uh, actually there's one other that's, um, the addition, the second one, which is on page two, is also an addition to a, um, uh, something that wasn't a change that was proposed. So I'm just distinguishing where the committee, the tree committee was suggesting a change to, um, proposed changes to the ordinance and where they're talking about some, um, pre-existing language in the ordinance. The two of the eight were, I'm not saying I disagree with them, but I just want to point that out for procedural purposes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, since the public hearing was held on very specific language, if these two points are not from that and they're taken from the general ordinance itself, then you can't really consider it.
So what, which two points were that, George? The, uh?
So, I don't know if people have their letter in front of them, but, um, if you, um, on page two, um, under D, landing, um, their proposal was to include, as far as part of the purpose, to reduce, uh, the heat island effect, which I absolutely agree is a well-intentioned and a good idea. But it doesn't, uh, that is pre-existing language. It doesn't, um, so the, um, the, the thing we had put forward for the public hearing didn't include a change related to that.
That's. And we're not able to consider that.
That's one. And the other is the last one I mentioned before, on page three, number two C, the last sentence where it says preservation of existing trees is desirable. Um, the proposal was preservation of existing trees must be prioritized. And again, I don't disagree with the sentiment or the intent, but that was language that was pre-existing, was not part of the proposal to change the ordinance.
Is, is, is there a difference, Eric, between changing language and adding language? I mean, what, what's, what, what's the difference in terms of, in terms of the way the, 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 the ordinance was originally drafted?
What I'm saying is this is that, uh, we have specific recommendations that we held a joint public hearing on. These two that George is pointing out, were not part of that public hearing, other than a friendly amendment, which we can't do on something we didn't try to amend in the first place. See what I'm saying? We're not starting from scratch here. If we're starting from scratch, then these are great ideas that we can all put, put it forward. But we had a public hearing on very specific language. And now this, this language is coming in that had nothing to do with that other language, other than it's in the same ordinance. We, I don't think we can consider it.
Well, how can we, I don't understand how we can consider any of these, any of these. And like, like, on, you know, like, on, we, like, replace three inch diameter caliper at a point six inches above the ground, the three inch diameter caliber in four and a half feet above the ground. I mean, that's a, that's, that's a change to the, the language that was submitted, isn't it?
We submitted language and this is a change to that language, but we didn't submit the original language under two points George is talking about. You see the difference?
I do.
It, it's about commenting on the proposed changes themselves, not about the zoning or, like, the ordinance overall. And so that's all we can consider is changes to the changes that were put forward for public comment.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so we, so we would have to, so if we were going to accept these, thank you, George, you're so good at this. If we were, if we were going to accept these, we would want to, we would want to not accept, um, those, those, those two items. The, the heat island effect and the preservation of trees.
Must be prioritized, right?
Right.
I regret having to be so specific about that because I like those ideas.
You're a procedural guy now, George.
He's so good.
He is. Um, okay, so, so that would be, so that, that's, that is, addresses the, the amendments, the friendly amendments at this point. Um, any further discussion on the low impact development ordinance at this point? George?
Yeah, I will, uh, offer that I, I think it's absolutely correct that four and a half feet, which, when I was on the tree committee, I learned meant was referred to as, uh, DBH diameter at breast height. And, um, but it is a significant change of, if something is three inches caliber, six inches above the ground versus it at breast height. Um, so, um, just pointing that out. So you're having a much more, you know, um, as, as Eric pointed out in the narrative, um, the, the idea is you have, you're supposed to have a flare at the bottom, tree flare, root flare rather. And so it could be deceptively that close to the ground, it could be deceptive. So I think, great, um, um, but great change. But I just wanted to point that out.
Thanks, George. Um, okay. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? George?
I I'll just make a motion to offer a um positive recommendation with those six um, uh, incorporating those six recommendations from the tree committee. And you have those, Eric, right? So.
Correct.
So, and that would, um, the six that did include those two we just discussed about the um uh, must be prioritized, existing trees and um, the other one. Reducing the heat out effect. So that would be my motion.
In fact.
Second, anyone?
I'll second it.
Jim's second.
Second that?
Jim, Jim got it.
I second it.
All right, great. Further discussion? Um, thanks for picking up on that nuance, George. I'm still trying to grok it, but I'm, I I trust you. And all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions? All right, thanks for hanging in there, tree committee.
Thank you so much.
Long meeting for a short amount of time. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, I I only listened to a quarter of it. Oh, my God.
Yeah, well.
All right.
You very much.
Bye.
Bye bye.
Bye.
That's it. Um, board and staff reports. Um, so Jamie has some news for us.
I have some news. I love you guys and I and I am resigning from the board um, at the end of this month. So if if I'm needed at the next meeting, I will be there, but I sadly just have too many work obligations. I'm juggling and been a good seven years. Um, but I sadly can no longer pick it out with you guys. So very sad, bittersweet moment to report that.
Well, yeah, thanks. I mean, I mean, I guess I've been, yeah, you were, you were on the board when I joined. That was five years ago. God, time goes so fast.
Seven years, wow.
Yeah. George, I think we started at the same time. You and me?
I think that's right. Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well.
Um, so sad to report that I did hear that um, Natty Hasi, um, who I had encouraged over the summer to consider applying, he finally went ahead and contacted the mayor. Um, and so I did let um Roxanne know that, you know, when I told her I was resigning, that, you know, I thought uh, Natty would be really, really great and he's um, he's still interested. And so, you know, it's a full board with me now in this moment, but once I'm off, there will, there will be um, an opening and I I don't believe there's anybody else out waiting in the wings. So um, so if he's still interested, then I think he'd be a great addition to the team.
Okay, great. Mark, that's your cue.
Um, I I think it's already done, you guys, because of uh, the the how the timing played out with Mayor Weida Gardner with the last appointment, um, and my indication of interest in being elevated. She, it's her intention to elevate me in reaction to Jamie's departure, which would create a vacant alternate position for Natty or somebody else to apply to. But I had already heard from Mayor Weida Gardner that it was her intention to put my name forward based on that, how it played out a few weeks back.
All right, very good.
This is a very, this is a very special seat.
Great. Yeah, well. Thanks, Jamie.
I know.
I've learned a lot from you over the years on the board.
Just ranting about farmland. I don't know.
You know, I have and always, always had a good voice and uh.
Oh, thank you, guys. Likewise, likewise.
Your area of expertise has been valued, um, being represented on the board.
So thank you. And and I'm still around. I'm, you know, probably not able to sign up for anything in the near future, but I'm very passionate, as you all know, about open space and farmland, and I'm really, really thrilled that we passed the Community Preservation Act. I'm just super thrilled about it. So as you all probably know, because we passed it, it means there will be the creation of this new uh, community preservation committee and uh, one member from the planning board must sit on that um, as well as from some other boards. Plus, I think the town council can say that they can pick a couple other people from the community can, can apply to be on it. So um just to put that plug in there that unfortunately I can't do it, even though I would love to to do that, um, because I've I've personally been involved with projects um in the past that, uh, farm protection projects that have utilized um, a town CPA funding in order to make that project happen.